All right, Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and call to order the City Council meeting, roll call.
Councilwoman Sendejas.
President.
Vice Mayor Allen. Councilmember Duggan. Councilman Supranah.
Here.
Councilwoman Kerr.
Here.
Councilwoman Sorrow.
President.
Councilmember Oranga.
Councilman Austin.
Here.
Councilmember Riggs Odie.
Here.
And Mayor Richardson.
I am here. All right, so I'm gonna ask Councilmember Supranah to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay, will the audience please rise if you're able, and we'll start with a moment of silence. Okay, thank you, please face the flag, place your hand over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the public, to the states, one nation, under God, indivisible, with which no justice is just.
All right, thank you.
So we started the meeting a little bit early today because we wanted to give enough time to start and talk about the homeless emergency declaration. So we're gonna start by bringing up item 24. Oh, actually, we have to do the report out, right? Let's do the report out in the special meeting first.
Thank you, Mayor, I just want to report out that there was no action taken in closed session, thank you.
Thank you so much, okay, so now let's hear item 24, please.
Item 24 is a report from City Manager, recommendation to continue the local emergency caused by conditions or threatened conditions of homelessness within the city of Long Beach and receive and file an update on the emergency declaration and provide any additional direction to city staff regarding the emergency, City Y.
Thank you, so on January 10th, the City Council unanimously approved our declaration of emergency, since then, there's been a number of actions that our departments have taken to begin to stand up more capacity to address our local homelessness crisis. We've taken a number of actions, and the City Manager told us that we will update, provide an update every two weeks. This is our very first one where we're gonna be able to answer some of the questions we weren't prepared to answer last time, and we provided a lot more time for the City Council to be able to dig in this time. And so at this point, I want to hand it over to City Manager for the presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, that was a good summary, we have been very busy over the past two weeks, so we will be coming back to you every two weeks under the municipal code to extend the emergency and give you an update. If at some point the council wants to give us alternate direction to come back at a different timeframe, we can do that, but in this, at least in the beginning part, we're prepared to come back every two weeks. Every time we do this, we're gonna talk to you a little bit about what's happened over the past two weeks, just so we can see it all together in one, because a lot has happened. We will spend some time answering questions, we'll do it in writing in the packet, but then anything else we can talk about during the presentation. And then we plan to do a two-week look ahead, so here are the, some of the focus areas that we're working on, the actions happen every day, and so, but we can give you a sense of what we're focusing on. If there's things that we need to adjust based on council input, we can then add those for the next round, or see if we can get them in that next two-week cycle. So I will turn it over to our team who will walk us through that presentation, and then we'll be available for questions and council input.
Wait for the item to load.
And if the agenda, or the PowerPoint can be pulled up in the back, please.
We're working on putting the presentations up right now.
Great, thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, thank you for the opportunity to provide an update on the work and to be able to discuss efforts to date and then also what is forthcoming. Just as a reminder, the mission statement for this event is to reduce the number of persons experiencing homelessness in the city and the region by increasing housing opportunities or by enhancing current initiatives that provide field-based outreach, engagement, and supportive services while maintaining the safety and security of the people experiencing homelessness, the general public, staff, and improving overall public safety for the entire community. There was a request at the last council meeting to be able to provide an update or sort of a list of existing services. We did include in your letter an attachment of an earlier council study session that included a lot of that information, but just wanted to give you sort of a brief synopsis of that work. So first of all, we have the Multi-Service Center which is located in West Long Beach, and that is our one-stop intake, it is a location where everybody comes to engage with our teams and enroll in the coordinated entry system. We provide mail services, workforce connection, showers, case management, and there's a healthcare clinic on-site at that location. We also provide outreach services in many forms, so as you've heard, we've moved from about four outreach members to 27 overall, and those are spread out across our general outreach teams, the REACH teams, which include a public health nurse and a mental health clinician, our new mobile access clinic, our mobile access centers, sorry, and so there'll be two teams there in our future library. There are three library outreach workers and four quality-of-life teams across the city, so the number has expanded significantly and it looks, the teams all serve different functions. In terms of interim housing, we did in 2020 launch our Atlantic Bridge Farms in North Long Beach, which is 125 beds. We have a number of non-congregate shelters, the Best Western, which we purchased through Project Home Key, has 101 beds. We are currently leasing the Highland, master leasing the Highland Motel, which is a 40-bed motel for housing for people as part of the encampment resolution. We are currently in planning and will be building throughout this year 34 modular units at the MSC, and we are also working to do a construction project with the Luxe Inn, and we anticipate that opening by the end of the year, which will have 78 beds. In addition, we have a number of permanent housing options, so we, you've heard about the 582 emergency housing vouchers that will, you know, cover housing, permanent housing for folks. We have 6,750 people using Housing Choice vouchers, which is helping them remain housed. We offer integrated case management with the emergency housing vouchers. We also have, which I don't have on the slide, but 884 permanent supportive housing units throughout the city, so that is funded units for people who need extra supports to be able to maintain their permanent housing. We have interdepartmental teams, so you can see all the different logos of all the different team members, but our city department leadership meets monthly to discuss policy and implementation. Our city department members, really those who are out, you know, doing the service, boots on the ground, they meet weekly to coordinate co-response as well as to ensure protocols are followed. And then we have our interdepartmental team members who meet twice a month with partners from the county and state to coordinate cross-jurisdictional response efforts in the city of Long Beach. In addition, we are working on inter-jurisdictional MOUs, so one is the Caltrans MOU, we're still in the process of finalizing that. It will run through June 30th of 2024, including $1.5 million through the Clean California Funds to cover 21 high-priority locations, includes maintenance assistance and additional protocols when persons experiencing homelessness are identified. We also have a draft county MOU that the county is looking at now to focus on the flood control areas, and the proposal really focuses on funding for our clean team going forward. So that's a, that is a brief overview of the services in place, and again, we do have the study session that we shared with you as part of your packet. So there were a number of questions in the previous meeting, many of those were answered as part of the, as part of the counselor that was submitted, in the materials submitted, so we won't go back to respond to a bunch of those, but I think that there were a couple of questions about definitions that I wanted to follow up on. So the definition's around falling into homelessness, so there's sort of three different ways that we think about it and the way we want to be thinking about measuring it. So one, it's a number of people who are receiving prevention services so they do not lose their housing, so that can look at like prevention services coming through the Multi-Service Center. We are funded for those very specific, it helps pay utility payments, one month's rent and others to ensure that people do not fall out of their housing. It also looks like the housing authority in terms of their vouchers, because if people have, if people have their rents paid, then they are able to remain in their housing. It also, we would look at the annual count to see who are experiencing homelessness for the first time, so are we seeing a reduction from one year to the next in the number of folks who say that this is their first time into homelessness? The other we would look at is the number of people who are rolling in homeless services programs for the first time, so are we seeing a reduction in people who are coming in to access, to access the programs? So those are the three sort of key elements right now about when we're talking about measuring the falling into homelessness. We were asked to talk about what does it look, you know, what does it mean to reduce, efforts to reduce violence? So first of all, we know that people are, you know, less likely to engage in violent behaviors if they have a place to live, they're employed, they have services that surround them, so one of the key efforts there is to really continue to engage people into the services that they need. The other is to start to think about violence interruption strategies to reduce retaliation after violent behaviors. We do have a peacekeeper model in the city of Long Beach, not specific to homelessness, but we do have a model that we think it could be an opportunity here to start to think about the violence interruption. And then we have strategies, you know, what, what we hear a lot is that people are really starting to lose a sense of hope, and without a sense of hope, they don't care what they're doing, right? They're not, they're not really engaging, and so how do we start to, how do we start to engage and rebuild hope for people who are living on the streets? So that a negative impact of criminal behavior feels more consequential than living on the street, because right now, it's like, to them, sometimes it just doesn't matter. So how do we start to do that? And then of course, we have, you know, our partnerships with our police department and, and the work that they do to respond to violent events. So we've taken a number of actions since declaring the emergency. We created the mission statement, which I read to you, and the focus areas for the emergency and have nine topic-specific work groups, which we shared the last time. We've informed all employees about the emergency and their reassignment, so people know that they are on call if they are needed. We staffed the Emergency Operations Center with over 100 leaders from across the city. We've embedded the Equity Officer in response to ensure that equity considerations and policies and priorities, resource allocations are in the conversation for everything we do. And we announced the response of the Billie Jean King Library and immediate focus on the downtown area, so you'll see the press conference picture at the top and the EOC activation in the second picture. We also launched a donation effort through the Mayor's Fund for homeless action, for funding and supplies, so the funding goes to the, goes through the community foundation, and the supplies will be, will be managed through our distribution center going forward. We kicked off the city's weekly update program to the community, which takes place every Tuesday at 11:00. We've had two of them, so the first was the Mayor and Allison King talking about housing, housing authority vouchers, and then today we had the Mayor and Christopher Coons discussing housing. We've announced the incentives available for landlords who participate in the emergency housing voucher program. We've received authority from you to expedite and review, the review and approval of land acquisition and facility improvements required to address the emergency. And today you'll be hearing another request to modify the job order contracts, the JOC program, in the Department of Public Works to allow staff to expedite project delivery for required homelessness response facility improvements. And finally, we launched the Mobile Access Vehicle, the vehicle and the program, the Mobile Access Center, and you'll see pictures here of that site. So it is currently located downtown, it's providing 10 hours of expanded MSC services on the street. At this point, it will expand to 30 hours per week, we're doing the final staffing for the entire program. It will be, we'll have a second van forthcoming later this year for another 30 hours, so this program will bring in additional 60 hours of access to homeless services through the sites, we're very excited about the opportunities. The services include intake and assessment for the, you know, for services, case management, the ability to start to access your vital documents, signing up for mail services at the MSC, linkage to shelter opportunities, basic medical screenings and support for care coordination, and referrals to mental health services. So there's a lot going on within this van, the only thing it doesn't have is a full health clinic and it doesn't have showers. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Eric, who'll focus on our efforts for the next two weeks.
Thank you, Kelly, a lot of work has been done to get to this point, a lot more work remains to be done. We're looking to launch the Mobile Command Center here in downtown Long Beach. We're also looking at three additional, three announcements, the first being the, a new emergency winter shelter that will hold at least 80 new beds, a new safe parking site with up to 50 spaces, and then an RV sewer dump station to provide an additional support to those in RVs. Launch, launching our business partnerships through our grant programs for damaged businesses is also an action we're looking to kick off in the coming, in the coming weeks, as well as launching the partnerships with our business improvement districts to help ensure a safe, cleaner, and more activated public realm. Oh yeah, I did mention the Mobile Command Center, thank you. The, in addition to those, we have some additional forthcoming actions that the, that the teams are working on. Kelly referenced the nine identified work groups, they are meeting regularly and, and helping us with, with the response. We're also looking at the development of our, of a proposed budget to support this response for City Council consideration. We continue to work on the data dashboard and are making progress there, and then we're also engaged in our efforts with our partners, both internal and external. Internally, we're in discussions with the Harbor Department, the Water Department, and Long Beach Transit. We're also reaching out to our educational partners throughout the city. who say that this is their first time into homelessness? The other we would look at is the number of people who are rolling in homeless services programs for the first time. So are we seeing a reduction in people who are coming in to access to access the programs? So those are the three sort of key elements right now about when we're talking about measuring the falling into homelessness. We were asked to talk about what does it look, you know, what does it mean to reduce efforts to reduce violence? So first of all, we know that people are, you know, less likely to engage in violent behaviors. If they have a place to live, they're employed, they have services that surround them. So one is one of the key efforts there is to really continue to engage people into the services that they need. The other is to start to think about violence interruption strategies to reduce retaliation after violent behaviors. We do have a peacekeeper model in the city of Long Beach, not specific to homelessness, but we do have a model that we think it could be an opportunity here to start to think about the violence interruption. And then we have strategies, you know, what what we hear a lot is that people are really starting to lose a sense of hope. And without a sense of hope, they don't care what they're doing, right? They're not they're not really engaging. And so how do we start to? How do we start to engage and rebuild hope for people who are living on the streets? So that a negative impact of criminal behavior feels more consequential than living on the street? Because right now, it's like to them, sometimes it just doesn't matter. So how do we start to to do that? And then, of course, we have, you know, our partnerships with our police department and 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 the work that they do to respond to violent events. So we've taken a number of actions since declaring the emergency. We created the mission statement, which I read to you, and the focus areas for the emergency and have nine topic-specific work groups, which we shared the last time. We've informed all employees about the emergency and their reassignment, so people know that they are on call if they are needed. We staff the emergency operations center with over 100 leaders from across the city. We've embedded the equity officer in response to ensure that equity considerations and policies and priorities, resource allocations are in the conversation for everything we do. And we announced the response of the Billie Jean King Library and immediate focus on the downtown area. So you'll see the press conference picture at the top and the EOC activation in the second picture. We also launched a donation effort through the mayor's fund for homeless action for funding and supplies. So the funding goes to the goes through the community foundation, and the supplies will be will be managed through our distribution center going forward. We kicked off the city's weekly update program to the community, which takes place every Tuesday at 11:00. We've had two of them. So the first was the mayor and Allison King talking about housing and housing authority vouchers. And then today, we had the mayor and Christopher Coons discussing housing. We've announced the incentives available for landlords who participate in the emergency housing voucher program. We've received authority from you to expedite and review the review and approval of land acquisition and facility improvements required to address the emergency. And today, you'll be hearing another request to modify the job order contracts, the JOC program in the Department of Public Works to allow staff to expedite project delivery for required homelessness response facility improvements. And finally, we launched the mobile access vehicle, the mobile, the vehicle and the program, the Mobile Access Center. And you'll see pictures here of that site. So it is currently located downtown. It's providing 10 hours of expanded MSC services on the street. At this point, it will expand to 30 hours per week. We're doing the final staffing for the entire program. It will be we'll have a second van forthcoming later this year for another 30 hours. So this program will bring in additional 60 hours of access to homeless services through the sites. We're very excited about the opportunities. The services include intake and assessment for the, you know, for services, case management, the ability to start to access your vital documents, signing up for mail services at the MSC, linkage to shelter opportunities, basic medical screenings and support for care coordination, and referrals to mental health services. So there's a lot going on within this van. The only thing it doesn't have is a full health clinic, and it doesn't have showers. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Eric, who'll focus on our efforts for the next two weeks.
Thank you, Kelly. A lot of work has been done to get to this point. A lot more work remains to be done. We're looking to launch the Mobile Command Center here in downtown Long Beach. We're also looking at three additional, three announcements. The first being the a new emergency winter shelter that will hold at least 80 new beds, a new safe parking site with up to 50 spaces, and then an RV sewer dump station to provide an additional support to those in RVs. Launch launching our business partnerships through our grant programs or damaged businesses is also an action we're looking to kick off in the coming in the coming weeks, as well as launching the partnerships with our business improvement districts to help ensure a safe, cleaner, and more activated public realm. Oh, yeah, I did mention the Mobile Command Center. Thank you. The in addition to those, we have some additional forthcoming actions that the that the teams are working on. Kelly referenced the nine identified work groups. They are meeting regularly and and helping us with with the response. We're also looking at the development of our of a proposed budget to support this response for city council consideration. We continue to work on the data dashboard and are making progress there. And then we're also engaged in our efforts with our partners, both internal and external. Internally, we're in discussions with the Harbor Department, the Water Department, and Long Beach Transit. We're also reaching out to our educational partners throughout the city and in LA Metro, the County of Los Angeles, and the Gateway City Councils of Government, with the understanding that it truly is going to take a partnership at all levels in order to be able to address the critical needs out there. That concludes our presentation, and we're here to answer any questions you may have.
All right, thank you. It's great to hear from our leadership team on this issue. It's been working really hard of these, you know, honestly, for many years, but really with a great focus these last few weeks. So now's the time, if you have questions, queue up. We're going to start with Councilwoman Zendejas.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to say thank you to the city team. Everybody has stepped up, and there's been so much that has already been accomplished just in less than two weeks. And very proud of you also, Mayor, in making sure that this that these projects are being taken seriously and that we are moving forward. Really excited about that. I was wondering if you could tell me a little bit more about the command, the Mobile Command Center in downtown Long Beach? Like, what exactly is that, so that our residents can understand that better?
So that'll be a location where all of our partners who are focusing now. So, you know, be the be the Health Department's outreach workers, police and fire partners, public work staff who are working in the downtown on specific projects, clean team, others would be would operate out of in the downtown. So it would be a common location for everybody checking and working. It has workstations and a number of other things. It's the same command vehicle we use for incidents such as the Grand Prix and others in terms of the vehicle coming from the Health Department.
Wonderful, thank you.
Anything else, Councilwoman?
I was wondering if there's any, I know this might be too too soon to know, but I, as you all know, I'm very interested in the voucher assistance program. Is there any details on coming up on that or how we're going to be able to try to extend that?
So currently, the vouchers, those who have emergency housing vouchers, they there's case management involved there and the ability to help support them find units. What we don't have is the the process of working with landlords to bring them into the into the partnership as much, right? So what we want to be able to do is put together the team that will be doing outreach to the to the landlords and and working to share what's possible, what the incentives are for them, and others to to bring more interested partners into, you know, into, just to bring more units online. Beyond the case management services, you know, we would love to be able to otherwise help support people with vouchers if they needed additional supports in addition to those that that have the case managers.
Thank you.
Great. Councilwoman Kerr.
Yes, thank you to staff for your efforts. You know, we talked about that communicating what's been done is going to be really critical for for folks to understand how quickly things are moving. And I know it can seem frustrating, because a lot of what's happening now is the behind-the-scenes work that's laying the groundwork for some real long-term solutions. I appreciate the increase in service with the Mobile Command Center. I think you said it went online last week, so we've already been reaching out to new people. On page 15 and 16 of the presentation, you talked about some of the solutions that I think are really critical to this work. So when we do outreach to folks who are unhoused on our streets currently and we provide services, what is some of them often remain unhoused after that? So we're providing services to folks, and we know that for folks to become stable, to get their needs met, that really is about being housed in some form. So I saw on those pages that we're bringing, you know, in the works of temporary shelters. We're talking about this as an emergency. So wondering how quickly we think we can get some temporary beds? We know during the pandemic, we mobilized in some spaces that the city already owned or that we were able to lease really quickly. So I think it's really critical in the mission statement, we talk about reducing the number of folks who are unhoused. And so that push for beds that at this point might be temporary, that will lead to more transitional or long-term permanent housing, which we're doing the background work on right now. So if you could just speak to that, what that numbers looks like, and how quickly we think we can get services to someone if they walked up to the mobile unit today and said, I want services, do we have a place for them to go?
I'll take the first part of how long it will take to build a emergency winter shelter. It will take about three weeks. So as from the time we finalize the location, announce the location, it will take three weeks to get it up and going and operational.
And we're looking, we are working with LASSA. It's really an expansion of the winter shelter program. So the funding will be coming primarily through the county to help support that program going forward. So as soon as all those, the the location is identified and we've figured out the contracts, that's that's the direction. Also, working closely to identify a partner, an organization to run it, right? A provider similar to what we do in other situations. So that would be that. And then so when it comes to people saying, you know, like, I'm coming in, I'm looking for, you know, I'm seeking services, they enroll right at that time. The question becomes what's available at that time. So there is a waitlist, you know, for folks. And so we're really just working, you know, to, A, be able to connect people into permanent housing so that, you know, every time we connect someone to permanent housing, we open up an interim housing space. So how are we doing that? So we're really trying to balance the our focus on long-term permanent housing so that we don't have to build so much interim housing going forward. So we do have that. And so, you know, we can move people quickly into housing when when these situations are in place. But, you know, certainly, the community hospital filled up within a few days. And so we do anticipate great demand for whatever we bring forward.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And I think, as you said, it filled up quickly. There's more demand than we have space for. So while we don't want folks to be in a long-term temporary situation, some of the ordinance reform that happened over the last two weeks will allow for more permanent housing to open up on the other end. But we know that we really want our unhoused neighbors to be housed. So if we can continue to focus on some temporary solutions that can turn into longer-term solutions, I think is really critical. Thank you for your work.
Thank you. Next is Councilmember Uranga.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm very pleased to hear that you're working with the LA County and trying to create a MOU or at least an agreement to work with them on some of these homeless issues, especially looking at my area where I have a lot of homeless establishments along the river. And also would like to see some additional work made done with Caltrans for a lot of the housing that is needed for those individuals that are capping out on freeway entrances such as Will Street entrance and PCH entrance. Not too clear what might be going on in District 5 in regards to the 605 entrances, but that might be also something to look into as well and communicate with them that we have a homeless issue in these thoroughfares that we need to clear up. And we know that they're very adept. They be homeless individuals and jumping from one spot to another. When they see a notice come in that they should vacate the 710 or an exit or an entrance, they do so, and all they do is jump over into the county area. Then when the county says, you guys got to move, they get up and move over into the city property. But that doesn't have anything to do with how residents feel about their neighborhoods. It's blank, and people are in their neighborhoods. And who gets the blame? We do, the city. So here is a comment on us to ensure that we have our partners online with us to address this issue. A lot of money is being spent, a lot of efforts being put in, but it doesn't work at all unless we get to my end. And we need that my end. One more issue that I that I have, if you want to call it a issue, is these RV sewer reclamation facilities that are going to be out there. Is there a map or method of communicating these sites to homeless individuals in RVs? So when a need comes, they are able to go to that area to dispose of their waste. That's all I have here.
So if I can jump in on the question on RVs, absolutely. We are looking to identify a site, we'll have services there. You can dump for free, you can get a water filled up, you might be able to do some light repairs on your vehicle. These are all things we see happening on our streets, in our parks. And so trying to create a spot for that to happen, as well as do waste removal and and make it a clean and safe area. We would want them to be engaged in services with us. It's not just for anyone who has an RV, but we would want you to be registered with the MSC so we can start helping with other services as well, and that's how we'll help distribute that. So it is really targeted towards individuals experiencing homelessness that are living in their RVs. And so, yes, they'll know where to go and how to do it.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Rixody.
I just had a couple of follow-up questions and just some questions about the the staff report that they put together. So this is actually a question from Ms. Colley. Thank you for answering my questions around the definitions. I just had a couple of points of clarification. So for the falling into homelessness, so the the general idea here is that really looking at individuals who are either kind of precariously housed or about to fall into homelessness or become homeless. Basically, that's why they're accessing services. And then additionally, people who are newly unhoused, correct? So that's that population. Okay. And then for the efforts to reduce violence, I think we all know that when someone becomes homeless, that makes you a very vulnerable person to many different things that can happen out. But what I didn't see when our efforts to reduce violence, and I wanted to ask you, does that include individuals who become unhoused because of domestic violence? I didn't see that as part of that definition, but maybe you're kind of bifurcating or considering those two separate things.
So you're talking about becoming domestic violence prior to becoming homeless?
This is the efforts to reduce violence, the definition. I wonder if that definition included domestic violence or not?
It does include domestic violence in that space. So we know that people who have, so we have a number of people who become homeless due to domestic violence, right? And we do work very closely with folks to be able to connect them to services. But we would also include domestic violence while people who are unhoused as well, working through that.
Okay, so as part as I guess the the broader question is, as our efforts to reduce violence going to be also efforts to reduce domestic violence? I guess that's actually my question. The answer is yes, great, okay. Thank you. And then additionally, so Mr. Lopez, I know you talked about for the focus area for the next two weeks is going to be engagement with several jurisdictions, right? So Harbor, Water, Transit, City College. I just wondered, I wanted to know for those different kind of groups of entities, so the Metro, County of Los Angeles, could you give us a little idea for the public and the city council? What's our goal there with like that engagement, right? Like, what are we, what are we looking to 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 share with our partners? And what are, how are we hoping that they're going to engage with the city?
Tom and Kelly might have some input to provide there, too, but I'll start. One of the big things is coordination. The the emergency has been declared at the county level, too. So we do expect that to help us improve coordination in critical areas. Councilman Uranga just mentioned some of the challenges when you do, when one entity does a cleanup, say, the flood control channel, you know, there's that's right next to an LA County asset, the bike path that's next to our property lines. We really do think we're going to be able to benefit from talking more regularly, coordinating more regularly, and addressing some of those longstanding challenges that I think could be resolved with a little bit of advanced planning and some extra tools at our disposal. And we do have extra tools that this declaration provides us to be able to direct toward some of those challenges. So that's just one example that that we're we're looking forward to helping us address the challenges.
And then we're going to be asking all of them to find ideas and way to help. So we've already reached out to our local partners, Harbor, Water, and now Gas Utilities and Transit. What can they bring, whether it be land or resources or people that can be part of this effort? And I think we're going to get very positive response from that. Our mayor's been talking to some of our educational partners. They are huge property owners, they've got resources as well. How can they be maybe part of the more housing solutions as opposed to some of the immediate homelessness that we're really taking the lead on? So there's some opportunities there. And then Metro and LA County. LA County, obviously, is a huge provider of homeless services and of mental, mental health. They are the provider. And so we're already having very productive conversations with them about the A-line, about their properties, about services, and Metro as well. So more to come. We've been, we're going to be issuing formal letters with requests, and we'll have dollar amounts as well, things that we're looking for, and that'll be worked on in the next two weeks and brought back to you in two weeks.
Thank you. And then just one additional question before my time is up. I think the Mobile Access Van is a fantastic resource for our city. And so I know it's right now, it's going to be focused at the downtown area. But my question was, in the the coming weeks and months, what is going to be the process for choosing locations and determining kind of the priority of where that van is going to be? And then if we, as council members, see hotspots in our in our communities, like, how do we reach, like, what's the process for reaching out to say, we're going to request that the Mobile Access Van go to X location?
So I'll be looking at where we are seeing, you know, the greatest presence of people experiencing homelessness. We'll also be looking at the locations where it's more difficult to get to the west side. So the multi-service center, it's some find it difficult to get there. So are there locations throughout the city where, you know, this increased access can can support? So I think if you're seeing hotspots, you know, certainly reaching out to the multi-service team and and identifying those. And then we'll be going through that and looking at the data that we're aware of, and then working to schedule across the city.
Great questions. Councilwoman Saro.
Thank you, Mayor. So, yes, safety has always been one of the biggest concerns. That's come up a lot in Public Safety Committee. And, you know, the Long Beach Police Department, as well as our Fire Department, always get high volumes of calls due to our unhoused communities because residents don't know who else to call. So really appreciate all the work that PD and and Fire Department, even our dispatcher, have done to make sure they're routing the calls correctly. And but that during that time, I was also wanting to make sure it was, you know, we brought in the our Health Department, what's the public health, you know, model around advancing peace. So I'm so glad that you include it in here, because it's so important in the ways we talk about safety, because it's very much affecting all our department in the ways we're contributing to addressing safety in in a way that is within the department's area. And one of the things that's come up a lot is just, again, the high volume of call that a PD and Fire Department get. So I was wondering what's going on with our REACH van and the hotline? And how does that relate to maybe the Mobile Access Center? Because we brought up, you know, creating the REACH kind of number in order to divert kind of the calls that PD and Fire was getting. So I'm wondering if you can answer a question in how it'll, the REACH hotline and the van's going to connect with what's going on with emergency response?
All right, so the REACH team, they actually, the requests can come through 911. So as a as a call comes through and it seems to meet the criteria for the REACH team, then they will respond. We also have, you know, forthcoming in the next couple of months, the Community Crisis Response Model that will also be available to help sort of reduce call volume around the issues around mental health. They reduce call volume for police and fire. In terms of the coordination between the Mobile Access Center, so that's that's the, you know, it's basically multi-service center on wheels. And the REACH team will partner, will be partnering with them as part of outreach, as part of engagement. So they're very coordinated. We do have, you know, sort of a key supervisor who oversees the outreach programs, and then they're coordinating across those teams.
Thank you. If I could just maybe ask a scenario about, for example, say, passage. You know, one of the concerns I get a lot from parents from Lincoln Elementary or a few others is, you know, when they're having an individual who they feel is, they may, you know, think is unhoused and is having mental health issues. So could they call that hotline, or they call 911? Either way, it'll get maybe to some service line to address it? I was just trying to understand how that would work as far as coordinating. Who's going to respond to that if they call 911? Or would it still go to police, or would it go to the REACH? Or the Mobile Access Center would be dispatched?
The Mobile Access Center is not a is not a response tool. So that's that's outreach, right? So they're pulling into areas, they're engaging people as you would the multi-service center. So that's not something that you would call 911 or others to say, come out now, kind of thing.
Okay, just want to make sure.
So, yeah, so that's not that, right? So then, otherwise, if you're needing mental health supports and others, you will call, you can call 911. It's not an emergency, it's not, the REACH team is not likely to respond, you know, it's not a crisis response. It's like, I see someone who has mental health services, you know, has a mental health issue. I'd like for someone to come out and check in with them. And then we sort of identify what the facts are and determine how quickly we can get out there. As you know, we're expanding to three REACH teams. We're going to be, you know, available now more into the evenings. We're going to be, you know, available now more into the evenings when other teams aren't available, and also some on the weekends. So that expands that opportunity.
Thank you. I hope to hear it again, because I'm trying to process, as we're getting so many different resources, how do we share that with our constituents, so they know the different level of services? Because, you know, when they're in that moment, it's a crisis for them, so it may not be according to our city's definition that, you know, they might think, well, why can't the medical center, that mobile access center just come right now, because they need service immediately, right? So I just want to make sure we just continue to clarify that for me to understand, and I think also our community. The other thing I just want to note too is, oh, I'm running out of time, I'll queue up again.
I mean, you had a good 30 seconds.
I know, but I think I need a minute.
No, go ahead.
Okay. So I have a lot of questions about the flood control. You know, Chittix Field is kind of a flood control area in the way that it was built. Would that be part of, I don't think county oversees that, or is there a partnership with county on that to provide services for those who encamp around that area?
It is an LA County flood control system. We do have a partnership with them, we do operate that as a park, so I would need to go back and talk to our Parks and Rec team and see how we deal with any issues in that park.
Thank you. Just want to make sure that they're not forgotten, because I know that we focus a lot on the lower LA River flood control channel area.
Absolutely.
So the, the other thing that I just wanted to make sure to mention and appreciate is that there has been for just ongoing concern around RVs that are parked, because sometimes they have nowhere to unload the sewage that they have, and that's one of the concerns we've had around Jenny Rivera Park area and surrounding areas. So I appreciate this being added, because, you know, if they're mobile in the vehicle, I think it's important we also provide other resources if we can, a place to shower for them to dump items, so that residents are not having to deal with that as a public health issue. So I appreciate the safe parking program and how we're going to continue to figure out to provide parking spaces. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Austin?
Thank you so much, and a lot of great discussion here today. I wanted to go back to a couple of points, I made some notes. Director Colapi, you mentioned our violence intervention, violence interruption strategies. Can you elaborate on what those are? And if we are tracking any data or any markers to determine whether or not these strategies are, are working for us and where?
Yes. So the violent interruption strategies we have now, they're peacekeepers. They are operating, and it's a pilot program in, in the Washington neighborhood, and we have designed an entire protocol with the Police Department about when something happens. Like our, our goal is to reduce retaliation, right? And our goal is to reduce ongoing. So if, if it, if an event occurs, when, you know, when things are more stabilized, then our peacekeepers are called in to engage, and that is a partnership. We have not done that for people experiencing homeless, but as we're thinking about, what we're seeing is, you know, there's, there's, similar to other kinds of violence, there could be retaliation. So how do we start to work within those communities when we're, when things are going on, that we could bring in a similar kind of opportunity to support there? So it's not in the works now. I mean, we have the strategy not related to homelessness, but it could be something that we look at going forward as a strategy.
All right. So it's just a pilot, it's a pilot at this point, but it's, we're looking at possibly...
It's currently in the Washington neighborhood. We are expanding it to North Long Beach with other, with other resources. But it is something that is, we were thinking about, what are some of the different strategies we could be engaging? We do have that as a model, we know how it can work, we have protocols in place already, and so there is a possibility that we could expand something like that, if we think it could work.
Great, thank you. And I know there are different levels of beds that we are providing with the, the goal to getting to permanent housing. We often talk about permanent housing being the, I guess, the optimal outcome for those who are unhoused. Can you, can you, do we, are we tracking any data in terms of the permanent housing that we have provided, or during, over, say, the past year, for, for those who are experiencing homelessness in the city of Long Beach?
Yeah, so currently, we have 1,800 and, I just, oh, there it is, 1,884 beds of permanent supportive housing that we, that we're, you know, that we're contracted out for within the city of Long Beach. So those are ongoing, and when those open up, we're able to place folks there, but they're pretty full. Then we have the housing choice vouchers. So we've been able to house just over 300 people through those housing choice vouchers into permanence, you know, into permanent housing, and they also have case management services attached to them. So those are the different spaces. I don't have the number of any additional permanent housing. I don't, I can bring back the number of any, the additional number that we've been able to permanently house for this year.
And council member, just to amplify that, we don't have it today, but if it's of interest to the council, every April, we provide by TFF to this council, as well as to the state, a report back on housing production. It goes into great detail, whether it's permanent supportive housing, other affordable housing, market rate housing, where it's dispersed, whether it's in small buildings or large apartment buildings. That's typically just one of hundreds of memos that you receive. So I think that when we're in this time of emergency, when we're in front of you, one of the Tuesdays in April, what we will do is kind of dive into that information as part of one of these presentations and give you a better understanding. We do have a robust pipeline, about 500 additional affordable units sort of in the pipeline. But to give you the whole picture, we're going to have to prepare, and it's usually around the first or second week of April that we would have the most up-to-date data to share with you.
Well, I'd like to get into, why I'm getting to that is that I'd like to just add that to, to any sort of dashboard for, for accountability and transparency for, for residents and those who are tracking our progress with homelessness crisis here in the city. And then I guess my last question is, I've heard a lot today, but one, one area that I'm, I'm really interested in is how we are coordinating with our community-based organizations to implement this overall strategy. Do we have any updates, or is that under consideration as well?
At this time, we have a community partnership work group, as, as a key focus of the, of the Emergency Operations Center, that is led by Teresa Chandler and Rebecca Kuhlmann. And so they are working to identify different partners, will be reaching out to, you know, faith-based organizations, businesses, educational institutions, and we'll be coming back with some goals and strategies for those next steps.
Thank you. Great questions. Councilwoman Bricks Odie.
I have more questions.
That's why we started early. Bring them on.
So this is under, I don't think you all presented this, this data live, this is part of the staff report under the, the data around homelessness that you presented. Me and the, the data working group are going to be besties. So this, there was a particular slide that I found very engaging that I wanted to talk about. So there's a slide that it's under successfully gaining and maintaining permanent housing, and it presents some data on the median number of days of experiencing homelessness by race, ethnicity, as well as the percentage for different race ethnicities, and how they were, and whether or not they returned to homelessness in the, in 12 months. And the thing that I found really interesting, and a little bit, and quite alarming, actually, was that if you look at the median number of days by race ethnicity, our, our black unhoused individuals have the fewest number of days where they're, they've experienced homelessness, but they have the much, much higher likelihood of returning to homelessness in, within 12 months. And for those of you who haven't seen the data, if you look at all the different race ethnicities, our black residents have a 62% chance of returning to homelessness within a year. The next highest is our white population, which is 20%, and everyone else is under 10%. So it's, it's a staggering difference. And so my question is from, and this to you Director Colapi, do you have any idea why that is? And then, you know, when we were talking about our homelessness emergency, we discussed a lot around equity, right? And being able to really address the, the emergency within the emergency, right? As, as around our black unhoused population. So what are we doing, why do we think that is, and what are we doing to address that?
Paul Duncan can respond to that question, and then we'll talk about the equity lens that we're bringing forward.
Okay.
Good evening, council. So there are a few different ways in which we, which returns get reported. So there is a return for all exits regardless of location, and then returns for people that have exited to permanent housing. So the numbers that you're looking at are all returns. So I think this speaks to a compounding lack of outcomes for certain groups, most notably black persons, our indigenous, and our Pacific Islander groups. We see much higher rates of experiencing homelessness, as well as poorer outcomes throughout our programs and returns to homelessness. Our returns for people that exited to permanent housing are much lower, but we still do see the disparities for those three groups that I'd mentioned. So a lot of the conversations are really around ensuring that services are adequate, that we are bringing in providers that are representative of those communities, and really, you know, are able to provide culturally responsive services. So that is one thing that we are keenly looking at, and every year, something that pops out pretty quickly is, that's something, if we don't address, it's really going to be hard to effectively reduce homelessness for our members and our community that need it most.
So one of the, one of the key things is we, so we do have a health equity team within the Health Department, and there is a black health equity lead on that team, who is now partnering with the, with the, with homeless services to start to identify what some of those issues may be. Like, so what are those key things that aren't working? How do we start to look at things in a different way? So we are taking it very seriously, and we're working to identify what that means, and you'll be hearing more about that as we go forward.
Okay. Thank you so much. And then additionally, this was just clarification for me. So under the slide, it says mental health calls for emergency services, and it's talking about, it showed 2019 and 2020 data. I'm assuming those are just, in general, just a totality of 911 calls? Or is that, is that how that's counted? I just wanted to know how, how we get those numbers.
It's overall calls to the multi-service center?
Oh, it's the multi-service center.
Oh, dispatch, sorry. I don't have it in front of me, so I was not sure which number it is. Paul, go ahead and answer.
Yeah, that was, we were looking at our need across the system. So there were a number around people that were calls around homelessness, and then calls around mental health. That was straight calls around mental health for housed and unhoused.
Okay, great. And then this is a, a question from the slide deck that's, that's factors leading to homelessness. And so I thought the, the slide was really great, because it basically talked about the reported reasons for people who come homeless, right? And the top four reasons were insufficient income, family problems, loss of job, loss of housing, and then you had substance abuse and mental health. And my just kind of overall question there is, when you all look at that data, what's the, what's, how did you, how do you use that to inform how the city focuses on our homeless services, right? Because we know that even though substance abuse and mental health are lower on that level of reasons reported for homelessness, that group takes up a large, needs a large amount of support, and that the costs associated with that are much larger than some of the others, right? So how does the city kind of, as staff, how do you balance that, right? That, that particular population takes a lot of resources, right? But there's other reasons why people become homeless that are more common.
So I'll answer, and if Paul wants to add anything from there, that, so what we've realized is that people don't necessarily become homeless due to mental illness or substance use, but what happens is it's exacerbated for the long, the longer that they are homeless. So what you're seeing now, the, the real concerns that we're seeing on our streets are people who, you know, are chronically homeless, they're experiencing severe conditions. And so, you know, one of the key things that we're looking at is, is our upstream preventions in those spaces. So how is it that we can be working on our, on our workforce? So what are, you know, how are we generating jobs? How are we creating housing that people can afford? Like those kinds of things, right? Like, that's half of our population who are becoming homeless. And then, you know, in addition to that, there, there's issues around family and family breakup. And so how do we, you know, continue to build and support strong families within the community? And then, you know, as I talked about the mental health and substance use, when you, like, what's the reason you fell into it? That wasn't generally the reason why you did. But then the longer that you were homeless now is what you're seeing, is more of the crisis situations that do take up significant resources.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Duncan?
Thank you so much for the update regarding the state of emergency and the work the city is doing to help stem this tide of homelessness. With the point in time count coming for Long Beach this Thursday, I just have a couple of questions, really to keep the public informed. When can we expect the 2023 point in time count survey numbers to be public?
We are working with the team. We feel confident that by mid-April, we should have our report.
That's great. It'll be great to have an accurate baseline, so we can see where we're going. Regarding the dashboard being created and providing updates about the nine metrics, when do you expect the dashboard to be complete? Did I miss that earlier?
No, we haven't, we don't have a defined date for that yet, but the team is working very hard on it. They've been doing mockups and figuring out how we're going to balance everything, and doing the outreach for all the different data points. So we are very active in the creation of that, but I don't have a date for it at this time.
I look forward to seeing the app that's used for the point in time count, and I look forward to an update for our dashboard. That'll be great. Thank you.
Fantastic. Councilmember Supremo.
I think I'll take advantage of Paul Duncan being on the hot seat here. My question involves private property where it's clearly designated no trespassing, or there might be no trespassing signage up, or might, the property might have a standing no trespass order. I know from talking to Paul in the past that your, the homeless services does not do enforcement. They're, they're not going to order someone off that property. My, my question is, are there any encumbrances to the services you can provide in that setting, a setting different than just a public property with, that you can trespass upon, if that's the term?
Yeah, I think it depends on what the property looks like, and how, like, can we reach that person with, in a reasonable, you know, being an open public or private property versus if they're behind a gate deep into somebody's property, we aren't, you know, going to avoid trespassing onto that person's property. We will try to make contact with the people and ask if they're willing to come over and provide the information we can. So it just really depends on the situation, and the case where somebody might be basically squatting in an abandoned building, that becomes even that much more difficult. But we work with PD to make sure we're working in conjunction and going out together when that building is cleared. We're not inside that building as it's being done, but we're on the outside, waiting as people come out to engage them and provide services, if anybody's willing.
Okay. So if I understand you, so if you're standing on the public sidewalk and someone is encamped on a private property with no trespassing, you, you can communicate with that person there?
Yep. As long as we can see the person and try to get their attention, we'll do our best to try to get them to come over and engage.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bricks Odie.
Okay. So continuing down the list of slides here, so this is under the slide deck that's current, the current funding. And so I just had, just a point of clarification, talking about the funding utilization. So here it was talking about the number of clients served annually for housing, the number of clients served annually for services. So actually, I just was interested, what year is this data from?
So that's a 2022 report, I think it's 21 data.
Yeah, it would have been, let me confirm, but I believe, I'll go back and confirm, but I'm pretty sure it's July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2021. And we should have updated data that we can provide at an upcoming meeting.
No, no, I mean, that's good, because I mean, that tells us basically part of the pandemic, right? Additionally, can you tell me a little bit about what is considered a client? So is a client anybody that walks into a facility?
So from our purposes, anybody that is enrolled into the homeless management information system, that we have data that we can report on. We do also track just our overall contacts. It's hard to necessarily de-aggregate of those contacts, how many people enrolled or didn't enroll. But there are people that we engage that we don't have necessarily a record that we can go and say, this person has these characteristics, and this is what we're doing. We continue to engage, and hopefully, you know, as time progresses, they're open enough to engage with us and provide us the information that we can put them into the homeless management information system.
Wonderful. Yeah. And it was just clarification for me, and then just as an additional follow-up, from, based on the data that you have, the idea is that these are unique clients, right? So these aren't visits... So these aren't visits, these are like individual people who are coming in and engaging, whether housed or unhoused, with the services that are available.
So we count both.
You count both?
So we do count both. So we count, we have, we know the number of individuals, right? Unique, unique individuals. We also know the number of visits.
Okay.
Right? So sometimes over here, we have 13,000 visits in a month. That's, that could be the same person coming, you know, a number of people coming in the same amount of time, it's not 13,000 unique individuals.
Right.
But then we, you know, then we are counting the individuals as well.
Gotcha, great. And then I was interested, for the funding detail, talking about funding activity categories, we had employment services, and I just wanted to know, what are those, what are the employment services that we offer?
So we have a couple different programs. At the MSC, we have a partnership with Goodwill, who provides job coaching and linking to employers that are interested in working with their programs. And additionally, we had a contract with an agency to provide supported employment where we were subsidizing a portion of the person's wage. We did have some challenges with that contract. We are going to be working with Pacific Gateway on looking at taking that over, so we are in transition with that.
Okay, wonderful. And then moving down to outreach services overview, so I see that we have, for the outreach services through the Department of Health and Human Services, we have several, you know, we have general outreach staff, reach staff, mobile outreach stations, and then library outreach staff. Could you just kind of briefly kind of tell me, what's the jurisdiction? Like, what do each of those teams be responsible to do? So they're doing outreach, so if we have a library outreach staff, what are they doing? Mobile outreach stations? Just give me kind of a general overview of what each of those, those groups is over in engagement.
So the library outreach staff are actually placed in the libraries. So we, we have, we have hired and placed three different, or three people across our libraries to be able to respond internally there. The mobile outreach station is similar to the, you know, to the, to the MSC, so engaged in those, in those opportunities. And the reach team are participating in terms of sort of mental health and physical health. So we have, there are two outreach members, but they're also with a public health nurse and a, and a mental health clinician. So, so the, the focus are a bit different, how they're engaged, as we talked about before. The reach teams can be identified, you know, can be called through 911, but they can also be called directly at the multi-service center. Paul has shared with me that we're at 250 calls a month, and half of those come through 911, and the other half come directly to the, to the multi-service center.
Okay, so if I am, you know, Joan Q. community member, right, and I call 911 and report something, I guess I just want to get a picture of, like, how does that get routed to what team? Like, what's that kind of internally, what does that look like?
So the only route, I think, from the, from 911 is the reach team. I don't know that the others are routed. The rest of all those calls go to the multi-service center.
Okay.
For MSC.
And we would like to say, if you're calling and you're wanting outreach, don't call 911, just call us directly, 562-570-4672. So dispatch gets a lot of calls, so if people can call directly, all the better. But if they call dispatch and it's someone experiencing homelessness without a safety or emergency situation, they will route it over to the outreach team.
Gotcha. And so I think, to that point, I think the importance of knowing that our multi-service center is also expanding its hours, right, to 7:00 PM, because I think a lot of times people think, oh, it's after 5:00, staff aren't available, I can't, you know, there's nobody to call, so they call 911. But I think it's important to know that staff is available later in the evenings, and I think with the multi-service center, you can leave voicemails, things like that, and let people, and, and receive follow-up if you need it. Mayor, if I have some other questions and nobody else is queued up, can I ask a few more things?
How many more questions, councilmembers?
Uh, I probably have like, like, five minutes more questions, I promise. I love, I just, I, I, I like information, I want to know, I want to know.
I know, I see that. Councilmember, if you could be expedient, we gave an hour for this debate.
I will try to be expedient as possible, I promise.
Thank you.
Um, okay. Uh, okay. So shelter bed, shelter bed inventory. Look, if you write me, if you give me a hundred-page document, I read it. See, look, I look, I read it, I read it.
Yeah, I do want to clarify, because you had asked, so at this time, you cannot call the MSC directly after, you know, after closing hours. We are looking, we are working on hiring staff to extend those hours for call times, but you can leave a message.
You can leave a message, right?
Yeah, you leave a message, and then we, you know, then we have a team that starts going through those messages first thing in the morning, and then, and then going out on those different sites.
Okay. And then this is just a question about the shelter bed inventory. I just thought the part about on quarantine and unknown was interesting. Could you just talk about what on quarantine, as far as vacancies means? And then for the shelters where it was like an unknown current enrollment or unknown vacancies? I wanted to, I was trying to figure that out.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll talk about the quarantine piece, and I'll have Paul talk about the unknown. But the, so when we were under quarantine, we had, we were reduced by about a third of the number of beds, given the spacing and the requirements to keep people safe during, you know, during the height of COVID. So when we say on quarantine, it might be that instead of 125 beds, we only had 75 beds or 80 beds available. And so that was, that's that comparison, and now we're fully open at the, you know, for instance, at the ABC. And so that's the not, that's the off-quarantine conversation.
Okay.
And then, overall, we have about 1,300 interim beds available within the city. Some of those are publicly funded or work closely with us, and we're getting regular vacancy reports. There's other stuff that is not funded by the city, where we're not getting regular reports, so it's unknown exactly what the vacancy is, though we're having to call and make referrals and finding out in lifetime. So there is some conversation about what can be done to try to improve the knowledge on those that we're not funding.
Wonderful, okay. And the last thing was, I just wanted to commend staff for, I think the social enterprise and healthy food market idea is fantastic, and trying to use that for, you know, transition age youth. I think that, I just want to say kudos, I thought that was a fantastic idea. So I'm looking forward to that. See?
Great close, councilmember. So thank you so much. Just a few thoughts and comments. This won't be the last bite of the apple. We'll be back in two weeks as well with another update, and we'll also continue the emergency until we, the council sees fit to move, shift priorities. I think we heard a lot, Mr. Modica, tonight about communications. The data dashboard is important. I think equipping the council members with the talking points and the updates that they need on a regular basis to make sure they keep their communities informed. I think we should also just sort of include them a little bit more on the plan on, sure, we started with a big focus on downtown, because that's where sort of the, the most immediate need was in terms of emergency, but we haven't taken a focus off of other areas. We're still conducting outreach in those areas. And as we sort of transition and wind down in downtown, when we see some measurable, some tangible results, we want to focus on other areas based on data. So we know there are some other very critical areas in town that we need some additional focus. We understand that, and we'll, we'll make sure that we get there. We also know that, and I think what we just saw right now, when we saw just a moment ago, we saw Kelly, we saw Eric, and we saw Christopher, that showed sort of, you know, Kelly is the capacity that we'll need forever, because we help people, we're a public health city. That allows us to look at this emergency from a health standpoint and equity lens. And then we heard Eric say he can stand up a shelter in three weeks. And, you know, that is like only possible because we have an emergency and because we, we elevated Public Works to play a lead role in this emergency. That's some of the immediate needs, the immediate things that you'll continue to see in the days and weeks to come, right? And then you saw Christopher Coontz talking about how we can expedite what we need to do to, in the medium and long term, to ensure that we build housing, so we don't find ourselves in this crisis in the future, right? And Paul, I see you there too. Paul's getting it done. Paul's getting it done. But I think it's all to say, we're changing the way, we're going to learn from this process on how we can better manage this process as a city and manage this crisis, but we have to, like, maintain our focus on communications and managing expectations with the public. There was also a discussion, you know, some emphasis on engaging with community partners and nonprofits. And, you know, I'll just reiterate, there's a number of sort of discussions that we're calling, an all-in discussion with clergy about opportunities with clergy, nonprofits, business community, landlords, and so it takes a little bit of time to coordinate these, but these are, these are happening. And then the last thing I'll say is, we can't solve this alone, and we've talked about the regional focus. So there's a lot of emphasis on engaging with the county, a lot of emphasis on engaging with the rest of the Gateway Cities. Because if we, you know, if we get it right, we can still see our numbers go up, even if we get everything right. So unless we help lead and show the region how to build capacity and how we solve this as a region, it, it's, it's important to us that the region understands how. Some of those cities don't have the capacity we have, so we may have to show them how to do it, or maybe do it for them. And so those are discussions we'll be having. So more to come. We have a motion, we have a second, there's no public comment signed up, is that correct, Madam Clerk?
That's correct.
Fantastic. So members, please cast your vote.
The motion is carried.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll move to consent. That's items one through seven, nine, 10, 12, with the exception of, we're going to pull items eight, 11, and 13. Let's enter, so we have a motion, and a second. Zendaya Hasieranga, is there any public comment on consent?
No public comment.
Okay, seeing none, Councilwoman Soro, anything?
Oh, sorry, item that I...
Okay, it's already pulled. Okay, we pulled eight, 13, 11. Okay, members, eight, excuse me, yeah, eight, 11, 13. Members, please cast your vote.
The motion is carried.
Fantastic. Okay, so we're going to take item eight first.
Item eight is a report from Human Resources, recommendation to adopt specification and award a contract to the Counseling Team International for Critical Incident and Counseling Services in a total annual amount not to exceed $250,000, citywide.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Duggan for a recusal.
Our family business offers mental health services and counseling for Long Beach firefighters for this item, so I have a conflict of interest as defined by California Governmental Code 8.7.100. I'll be recusing myself, thank you.
Okay, let's take a moment, so she can step out of the room, please.
Let's have a brief staff report here.
Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, the item before you this evening is to award a contract to the Counseling Team International, or TCTI, for Critical Incident and Counseling Services for sworn and civilian personnel employed in the Long Beach Police, Long Beach Fire, Long Beach Disaster Preparedness and Emergency Communication Departments. Just some background, approximately three to five years ago, the, the police department started seeing an increase in the number of critical incidences involving staff, including officer suicides and deaths that impacted officers directly in the course of their day-to-day work. This led the command staff looking into enhanced services to deal with the increase in crisis events, and the department eventually worked with Human Resources to identify solutions. As a result of an RFP, a one-year pilot program with TCTI was approved by the City Council. During the pilot, data showed a major increase in the utilization of TCTI compared to traditional employee assistance programs, which could mostly be attributed to the specialized services offered by TCTI. Because the fire department and disaster preparedness staff were experiencing some of the same critical incidences that also affected the police department staff, a determination was made that extending critical incident services to these groups would be appropriate. Tonight's item is a culmination of a more expansive RFP process following the one-year pilot. If approved, TCTI will be able to offer their services to all three departments under the umbrella of a centralized contract. The RFP selection process included designated representatives from each effective, affected labor association, in addition to staff from Human Resources and department staff from each of the three departments. Just some brief background on TCTI. They have over 37 years of experience providing critical incident support and counseling services to law enforcement and public safety agencies. They provide 24/7, 365 standby services for critical incident response. Their mental health professionals are certified by the International Critical Incident Stress Foundation, and they have a long history of helping public safety employees cope with stressors inherent to their careers. Some general services they provide are short-term counseling services to the specific employees and their eligible immediate family members, and counseling, training, and critical incidents response services. They provide long-term, referrals for long-term counseling needs. They work directly with the employee or their family member to refer for long-term solutions that are needed. And again, they provide counseling services and scheduling options in a manner that's flexible and convenient to accommodate department personnel who work traditional and non-traditional work hours. Essentially, they function on a 24/7 week basis specializing in public safety. In terms of next steps, TCTI will conduct a robust marketing campaign to educate employees and their eligible dependents on the services provided, including literature, documents, training, and orientation with each department staff. That concludes the staff report, and we're available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Rick Sode.
Hi, thank you. I just, I asked for this item to be pulled off consent, because I just thought that offering this to our, our public safety personnel was just amazing, and I wanted to make sure that we were highlighting the work of the city is doing to make sure that we are supporting our first responders, and that was really my, my goal here. And so I just had a couple of quick questions, which was, could you just let me know, are these services accessible to our staff while they're on their shift? I know you mentioned the fact that it make them, it's going to make it flexible, and then additionally, do they, do they, is there a process for them to get access to them? Do they need permission from, say, a supervisor? How does that work?
Thank you, Councilwoman. Yet, yes, the CTI services are accessible while they're at work, and, and for example, if there's a critical incident that happens during the course of a shift, representatives from CTI will come out and speak to the employees while they are on duty and at work. But we also offer one-on-one referrals and, and more recently are able to direct employees to a referral if they're involved in a traumatic event.
Wonderful, thank you so much.
Fantastic. Councilwoman Soro, anything?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Is there public comment here? Seeing none, members, please cast your vote.
The motion is carried.
Item 11, please.
Item 11 is a report from police, recommendation to receive and file the application of Dobbs Boys LLC for an original application of an alcoholic beverage control license at 3722 Atlantic Avenue, District 5.
Thank you. Ignorance, Councilmember Rick Sode for the recusal.
In accordance with the, with the section 84308 of the California Government Code, I need to recuse myself in this item because I accepted a contribution of more than $250 from one of the owners who was participant in the subject proceeding.
Fantastic. All right. I see you queued up, Mr. Manager, you have a report here?
Yes, Mayor, on this item, we would like to make a correction to the applicant's name. And this is reflected in the agenda and some of the other backup materials as Nony Mercato, and that should be Nona Mercato, that's M-E-R-C-A-T-O. So we just want to make sure that the record accurately reflects the name. Just for background, this, the typo was actually in the initial ABC application, and that typo carried through to all of the council's materials, so we just want to make sure that for the record, that name is corrected.
Thank you. It's reflected in your motion, Councilmember McCur. Correct?
Correct.
All right. Councilman McCur, any comment here?
Yeah, no, just a correction of the name. I'm a fan, so I noticed it right away. Thank you for fixing that.
Okay, Councilwoman Soro, anything?
No, I just love their croissant there, supportive of the item.
Councilmember McCur, should I add this to the 100 Small Businesses in 100 Days Tour?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to public comment, we have Evan Browdy.
I just want to make one correction. Since I did the, I did the filing with the ABC, I reviewed all the paperwork that we filed with the ABC, and there was no mistake. It was ABC picked it up wrong. They actually made the mistake.
You sure about that, Evan?
Positive.
Okay.
And, yeah, have it here.
For the record.
But anyway, thank you very much for moving this forward.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, then moved and seconded it. Members, please cast your vote.
The motion is carried.
Thank you. Item 13, please.
Item 13 is a report from Public Works, recommendation to adopt resolution to intern to an agreement with Downtown Long Beach Alliance in an annual amount not to exceed $291,000, District 1 and 2.
Thank you. Councilmember Rick Sode is, is again recused on this item. Councilwoman Zendaya.
Do I need to say something, or no?
I think we just said it. I think you're good.
Okay, you must, yes.
You must, yes. City Attorney says yes, you must, yes. Please come back.
In accordance with the section 84308 of the California Government Code, I need to recuse myself in this item because I've accepted a contribution of more than $250 from an agent who is participating in the subject proceeding.
Thank you. All right, Councilwoman Zendaya.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm very happy to support this item and our longstanding partnership with DLBA. Community partnership will be key to providing quality service for residents and coming together to solve our challenges. For District One, that sometimes means keeping our streets clean. This item will support and enhance cleaning services and trash cans throughout the downtown area. Thank you for city staff and DLBA for working together on this, and I was hoping city staff could give just a brief sentence or so on what the enhanced services are so that our residents in the downtown area are aware.
Absolutely, Councilwoman. So, a lot of this is cleaning, is enhanced cleaning within the right-of-way. We do focus on First Street between Long Beach Boulevard and Pacific, and within trash receptacles throughout the entire downtown area. The more visitors we get, the more, the quicker the trash cans fill up, and this partnership with DLBA is amazing because it helps us keep a tab on those and keep our downtown area as clean as possible. So it's an amazing partnership with them. We're really proud of it, and we are looking forward to continuing it.
Thank you very much, Director Lopez.
All right, Councilwoman Soro, anything?
Supportive of the item, that's it.
Fantastic. Any public comment here? All right, extremely supportive of this item. Members, please cast your vote.
The motion is carried.
Fantastic. Next, we'll have fund transfer consent.
Item twenty-two is communication from Councilwoman Soro. Recommendation to increase appropriation by $1,000 to provide a donation to Partners of Parks to support the Long Beach Hoops After Dark. Item twenty-three is communication from Councilwoman Austin. Recommendation to increase appropriations by $3,000 to provide donations of $2,500 to Long Beach Community Action Partnership and $500 to Long Beach Unity Festival.
All right, it's been moved in seconded. Any public comment here? Seeing none, members, please.
I'd like to make a few comments.
Okay, Councilwoman Soro.
Thank you. In regards to the Hoops After Dark item, I just wanna thank all the staff and coach and the police department for completing another successful season for our youth. So I wanna give a shout-out to all of the staff and coaches for their hard work and leadership. Coordinator Leonard Adams, Assistant Lead Coordinator Earl McCollough, Data Communication Coordinator Seleneika Smith, and Workshop Coordinator Errol Parker, Assistant Workshop Coordinator Tony Ford Hickson, Work Instructor Logan Baumann, Workshop Instructor Vanessa Black, Senior Head Coach Terrence Jackson, and all of the coaches, Shawnee Wilson, DeAngelo Wilson, Ernest Curtin, Warren Brown, Nate Walker, Greg Williams, and Ricky Reddick. The All-Star and Championship Games took place last week against the players and the police department, so it was really a close game, but police department won by five points. Congratulations. I was, you know, once an executive director for a youth program, so I know how much work it takes to coordinate all of these activities. I'm sure they're gonna ask for a rematch. And so I'm very proud to be able to support the Hoops After Dark with this contribution, so thank you very much.
All right, congratulations to the police department for winning. You know, we'll see what happens next year. Members, please cast your votes.
The motion is carried.
Thank you. We'll now move to our hearings. Let's have hearing fourteen, please.
Item fourteen is report from Development Services. Recommendation to adopt resolution certifying the fire station number nine at 4101 Long Beach Boulevard, project environmental impact report. Adopt resolution approving a general plan amendment. Declare ordinance approving its own chain read the first time and laid over to the next regular meeting of the City Council for final reading. Declare ordinance to repeal and remove the five-foot special setback along the west side of the Long Beach Boulevard, read the first time and laid over to the next regular meeting of the City Council for final reading, and approve the site plan, standards, variances, and allot merger, District Five.
All right, we'll recognize Councilmember Rex Odie for recusal.
I am recusing myself because I was a prior planning commissioner when this became before that.
Thank you. There's no oath required. We'll pass it on to City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'd like to introduce Mary Ann Cronin. She's a planner with the Development Services Department, and she'll make this presentation.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. Before you this evening is a hearing for the approvals associated with Fire Station Number Nine Project at 4101 Long Beach Boulevard in Council District Five. The proposed project would merge the parcels on-site and rezone them to a consistent mixed-use one zoning designation as well as a united general plan amendment to have a conforming general plan place type of what's called NSCL for the entire site. And the project delivery for this would result in a new Fire Station Number Nine to be restored to Fire Service Area Number Nine. As depicted in this slide, the proposal does include a 12,780-square-foot two-story fire station that would be designed with LEED Leadership in Energy and Environmental Design, or LEED, Silver Certification. And the following slides will provide an overview of the approvals before you today. The 0.4-acre site is located at the northwest corner of Long Beach Boulevard and East Randolph Place in the Los Cerritos neighborhood, as shown in the outline area on the upper left-hand corner on this slide. The project site is comprised of three parcels that would be merged to form the complete site for the new fire station. The project site does a but single-family residences to the west and northwest, a coffee shop and retail uses directly to the north, multifamily residential uses and office uses to the east across Long Beach Boulevard, and office uses to the south across Randolph Place. It is worth noting that the current site does carry two different zoning designations as well as two different general plan place types that would be unified as part of this project approval. The proposed project site would serve as a replacement to the original Fire Station Number Nine, which was historically located at 3917 Long Beach Boulevard, approximately two blocks south of the project site. This site is shown in the upper right-hand photo on this slide. The former fire station operated until summer 2019, when it was vacated due to the presence of toxic mold in the building and determined uninhabitable by the Long Beach Fire Department. And when this fire, when this fire department determination was made, the interim location that's shown in the bottom right-hand corner was established at 2019 East Wardlow Road until a new permanent fire station location could be secured and constructed. Presently, this site in the lower right-hand corner operates under a three-year lease. This slide shows the general plan amendment as well as the zone change that are before you under today's action. As noted, the overall place type would be conforming and across the entire site, and that would be the neighborhood-serving commercial low, three stories, and a consistent MU1 zoning designation would be carried across the entire site. As you will recall, in 2019, the city adopted the general plan land use element for which the city is creating new zoning across the entire city, and this would implement that place type that was adopted as part of the land use element. This slide shows the configuration of the new fire station, which would be designed consistent to the MU1 zoning standards established for the site. As you can see, the two-story fire station would be oriented more towards the corner of Randolph Place and Long Beach Boulevard. Three drive-through apparatus bays, as well as a widened alley, would allow for a pull-through configuration for the apparatus that are identified for this site. Eleven off-street parking spaces would be located to the rear with a new driveway for the fire personnel to exit on a right-hand-only turn onto Long Beach Boulevard. Two new widened driveways would be included as part of the subject standards variances, and those are unique to the trapezoidal orientation of this site and would be addressed through design of the new traffic signals that would be installed at Randolph Place and Long Beach Boulevard to ensure the safe exit of fire apparatus into the public right-of-way while also eliminating the need for backing maneuvers and the associated noise. This slide shows the overall elevation, color elevations of the new fire station, which would be constructed at 32 feet 6 inches in height. The building exterior would incorporate a mixture of rain screen systems over masonry base with metal and wood composite siding. It is worth noting that the orientation of the windows that you'll see on the elevations at the interior have been reduced and minimized to only have one trainee bunk room that faces the interior property line closest to the building, and all other windows for bunk rooms have been oriented to the farther property lines to enhance the privacy and compatibility with the structure to the adjacent residential uses. As part of this action, you will have the repeal of a five-foot special setback that is established along this portion of Long Beach Boulevard. As such, we do rezone, and the intent of the rezoning is to really bring activation to street frontages, and in this case, the special setback that was established in 1930 is in conflict with the zoning, and therefore, this is repealed as part of delivery of this project. Conditions of approval have been included in this project, and I will go over a couple of these related to public comments and how those have been enveloped into the conditions of approval. But some, the most important of those includes the compliance with the mitigation monitoring and reporting program that I'll discuss in the next couple slides. Furthermore, public comments received from the Long Beach Unified School District included the encouragement of pedestrian access and protection plan during construction, including during nearby school time, active hours, and that has been included as a direct condition of approval in response. The new traffic signals would have to be included in operational prior to fire station operation, and the notification of neighbors prior to the initiation of construction activities. As previously noted, their project would have LEED Silver Design, and there would be a dedication and improvement of 2.5 feet of the right-of-way at the rear alley. This project was required to comply with the California Environmental Quality Act, and this slide shows an overview of the CEQA process and the public outreach components that are required under that CEQA process. This project is before you today for certification of AEIR as part of compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act. During that project process, all potential impacts were determined to be less insignificant with the mitigation that have been incorporated and are required to be complied with as part of the conditions of approval. Furthermore, findings of fact have been made in the affirmative, and the project would not have any significant unavoidable impacts under CEQA. At the October 6, 2022 Planning Commission Meeting, the city received one verbal public comment that is, was related to the adjacent residential uses and potential red curb areas and concerns related to that have been included in the conditions of approval as part of this. Public Works prior to the initiation of the environmental process under CEQA did do outreach with the community, and that was held on November 9, 2020, in advance of the project before you today. The city did receive written comments during the initial study as well as during the draft environmental impact report review. All those public comments have been included in your record that are before you today. In addition to the public comments that were received as part of the California Environmental Quality Act process, Planning Commission did receive one verbal comment that I did mention to you in my previous slide, but also notices were distributed in accordance with the municipal code. Three public comments were included in your packets today, and those did have, in response to the City Council noticing, and those did include topics related to alley driveway access, noise from fire trucks access, as well as on-site, as well as off-site, so street parking demand, and the flexibility to expand for future use needs, as well as the location of the traffic signals. It is worth noting that the police, the fire department is here, as well as the Department of Public Works, to ask any, answer any questions that you do have, but with the relation to the flexibility, this project has been designed with a 50-year lifespan and to include capacity for all future personnel needs for the fire department, and has been designed to ensure adequate maneuverability for the site. As indicated in the findings that are included in your packet, staff does find that the proposed project is in conformance with the adopted goals and policies of the general plan and does include the recommendations that are on this slide for your consideration tonight. The representatives from the Department of Public Works, Fire Department, as well as the design team are available for any questions you have today. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on this? Okay, seeing none, we'll now take it behind the rail. Councilwoman McCur.
Sir?
So, this is a hearing. You have to sign up in advance to address the council. Are you a party on this, are you a party on this hearing at all? Okay. I'm gonna go to the attorney. I know hearings, we have to stick to a certain protocol. What should we do here?
We should receive the public comment in this instance.
I'm sorry?
Receive the public comment in this instance.
Okay, so we're gonna take your public comment. We'll queue up three minutes.
Yeah, regarding this police, I mean, this fire department number nine, this has been an ongoing situation originally. The reason why this part was selected, because it was an emergency on the fire station, we had to have a thing for the city. However, every time after that event, the fire station, they don't say they can complete all their requirements to meet the timing to get to the individual places, and even recently, they said it's still where they're separate right now and their temporary location still can meet any fire station issue. So there really is no immediate reason to do this, and my biggest point, which not really addressed, I put it as a comment, was in order to make this happen, you had to do numerous variations. You also had to change a lot of ordinance stuff, plus you have to convert an alley into your driveway for the fire station, otherwise you couldn't meet the first criteria of this problem, was to have a drive-through. That was one of the reasons why they couldn't put it at the Long Beach old facility, because there's no way it was big enough or that. However, now we're gonna take over a driveway, an alley for the driveway, and then you're gonna cause additional congestion and traffic at that position. So unless you have a really good way to divert the traffic northbound and southbound during rush hour traffic, you're gonna have a hard time getting into the fire station and getting out of it. I believe previously, whenever we had the traffic that was backed up almost to Long Beach, the old Long Beach Fire Station going northbound, they would come out on, the old fire station going north on Virginia and come out San Antonio to get around that traffic there. So unless you can time all this stuff perfectly, you're gonna have a hard time getting out of that station, no matter what you do. My biz complaint is that you have to, you shoehorned us in with all the different variations, all the different setbacks, and not really providing that consideration for the general public in that area.
Thank you.
And the other comment I have is that it was never really addressed. They've mentioned it, that they addressed the red curbing, however, all the other fire stations, like Fire Station 12, they built a brand-new, beautiful facility years ago that's red-curved all around. Most of the fire station's red-curved all the round. So you're gonna get rid of a lot of parking on Long Beach Boulevard. Yeah, we understand the one on Randolph, but Long Beach, you guys don't address that, and you don't say that those eight parking spots that are there, that the merchant and everybody else in that area can use, is gonna go away. Eventually, you guys will be doing that, and that's my concern, is you really haven't provided all of the information to the public to say this is what's gonna happen to that fire station. I think that's good for me. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Okay, we'll close public comment, take it back behind the rail. Councilwoman McCur.
Yes, thank you so much, staff, for your report, and I wanna thank and acknowledge Councilmember Austin, who...
Okay, all right. Is there anyone else on this item?
Mr. Mayor, can I make an announcement real quick?
Sure.
So just a reminder for the member of the public in the chambers, we request that members of the public sign up on the agenda items before the item is read. So if you are here, please... So, if you are here, please see the clerk before the item is read.
Thank you. Okay, we'll take your public comment.
I live from two thousand nine in, right now, to the new fire station. This is my two-fifty-five East Randall place, and I'm handicapped all the time, and I bought that house because I cannot go most of anywhere. And I'm so happy that I can buy that house and remodel for my income and all kind of things, and never in wildest idea that station, I mean, Fire Department will come in a corner, okay? And I cannot, special now when I'm older, and I fell down a couple of times, and I cannot walk now, and it is very hard on me. I'm most of the time in a house. And if I like to sell the house, when Fire Department come, we'll be going down, and I will have a lots of noise, and I'm most of the time in a house, and I'm by myself. My husband died, and my grandson helped me a little bit, and my son helped me a little bit. I don't know why is this in little place like that need to be built like that. There don't have anything in Long Beach that there can build somewhere else, not just down there. How in the world I will be feel? I'm eighty-two years old. Maybe tomorrow I can die, maybe not, okay? I cannot believe it, all this year, what I'm in America, worked two, three jobs, and I lost my leg. Working, lost my leg, okay? And now, I cannot believe it, that you building like that, and you can go from, from my street, you're not going from maybe Long Beach Boulevard inside or something. I don't know if I speak properly. I didn't prepare my son prepared, because I was thinking my son will become he working tonight, and my grandson can help me a little bit, you know? This is, I don't know who, who make this decision, never put their self in a people who live, maybe somewhere else live in my, my house or somebody. I mean, when you looking what is going all, all over the world, what is going on, like killing, shooting, war and everything, why people doing these things? There don't have any smart people in the world that are decide. Where is the people, where is the smart people that they decide the better things for old folks?
Thank you. Your time is up.
What did you say?
Your time is up.
My, my time is up. Yeah, that's, and they always say, anything will happen, I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry.
Thank you for your time. Okay, so, that's the end of public comment. I think some of the concerns, the council will address. Councilmember Kerr.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, staff, for bringing this forward. I know it's been a long process. I want to acknowledge Councilmember Austin, who has been shepherding this through for many years, and his hard work on this, and the partnership that he has had with you up until this time. Happy to be on board to continue to do the work. I wanted to acknowledge the public engagement timeline that you put there, the public noticing that has happened, and I know that staff will continue to engage with neighbors, residents, as the process continues after tonight, so I'm assuming that would happen. I just had two quick questions. So, we signed a three-year lease, so obviously, we will come to the end of that three-year lease. Do we have the opportunity to renew that three-year lease moving forward as we move forward with construction? And then, the second one is just if you could address the light and the signal that will be there. I know at some fire stations, we have signals that simply activate as trucks are coming out, wondering if this is one of those lights, or if this will be a standing traffic fixture that may help with flow of traffic on the street.
So, Councilmember, it involves a negotiation that would not be an open session discussion, but we believe there's ways to extend that lease with the other party to the lease. So, before answering the other part of your question, I think it would be helpful to hear from fire sort of how we got here, and why the fire station is needed, and Dennis can explain that better than I can, and then we're glad to go into the more detailed questions about the traffic and the turn signal, if that's acceptable to the council.
Yeah, absolutely, and that was my only question. Thanks.
Good evening, Mayor and council. So, for the Fire Department, that new location's gonna greatly reduce our response times. That's one of the big key factors here. Also, it's gonna improve the community safety there. We were responding on Virginia Country Road, oh, yes, Virginia Country on the residential going code three with our sirens, and that's really affected the safety of that community, and also the safety of the firefighters. This new station also is gonna help with general accommodations, make it safer for everybody. And then, also, we're gonna be reducing the accumulation of pollution noise. So, now, coming off to Long Beach Boulevard, there'll be less sirens in that residential neighborhood.
Great. And then, just the question about how that light would operate on that corner of Randolph and Long Beach Boulevard, if you know?
Currently, we have a few of our stations that operate that way. So, when the call comes in, as the firefighters are responding to, or as they're walking into the fire engine or fire truck, there's a switch, they hit that switch, and that gives them around a couple of minutes where it activates the light, turns red on cross traffic, turns green for the fire engine and truck. So, that even reduces the response times.
I would like to add that it is a fully functional traffic light, and there would be sensors installed in a vehicle approach, so that it would function just as a regular traffic light as well, in addition to the controls from the fire station.
Great, that's good to know, because I know we're worried about speed on that street, and that's one more light that, that can potentially slow that traffic. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you all. Recognizing myself, Mr. Mayor, as the secondor of the motion. I've lived with this issue for the last three and a half years, and I'm happy to see it get to this point. I want to thank staff for all your hard work. I want to thank the neighbors for coming out and expressing their concerns over this. I can tell you that the vast majority of the constituents of the old Eighth District in the community are excited about this fire station. There's been a lot of conversation about response times and, and the need to replace the old former Fire Station Nine. And the process in which we took to identify this location was, was one that I just want to just say, I think it was a full-court press and required a lot of vigilance and attention of city staff. Our Economic Development Department negotiated, found a site that was suitable, negotiated a deal, and we were able to procure it. And now, we're at this point, I think it just says a lot about, you know, when we put our focus on, on an issue, we can, we can get things done. Obviously, we have a long way to go still to get to construction, and in that process, I'm sure that there will be greater community engagement, and some of the concerns that residents have will be addressed in, in, in the interim in that process. But this is a win for, for our community, and I just have to see it that way, I just have to articulate it that way. Most, the vast majority of residents are thrilled that we're gonna get a fire station to replace Fire Station Nine because of the proximity of where it's at. Strategically, it's important that fire station will help save lives, improve response times, and better serve our community. And so, I'm happy to second this motion this evening, and would ask my colleagues the support. And also, I want to just thank the council members who were involved three years ago, right? Councilmember Yoranga, Mayor Richardson, they were, we had a community meeting, at least two-hundred people, two-hundred-and-fifty people showed up. They were very concerned about the future and what that looked like. And at that time, I think you were acting city manager, Mr. Modica, you were there, we had our fire chief there, we had our police chief there. It was a full-court press to, to respond to the community and identify a new location. And so, we have that location, we have an opportunity to move this item one step forward to getting this project complete for our community, and I'm happy that we, we're here. Ask for your support. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I think Councilman Austin said it, said it best, to have critical infrastructure in the Big Spinoles, Uptown, Los Ritos community, that's a big deal. After we move forward tonight, depending on the decision here by the council, we now have to prioritize funding it and building it so we can deliver it. Members, please cast your vote.
Councilmember Yoranga? The motion is carried.
Thank you. Hearing sixteen, fifteen, please.
Item fifteen is report from Development Services, recommendation to receive supporting documentation into the record, conclude the public hearing, and consider the applicant's appeal by S.M. Car Wash, adopt resolution, and certifying a mitigated negative declaration, declare ordinance amending the land use district map, read the first time and laid over to the next regular meeting of the city council for final reading, and deny the appeal of the planning commissioner's decision, and deny a conditional use permit for a new detached automatic, automated car wash located at one-nine-one-one East Pacific Coast Highway, District Six, and this require an oath.
Thank you. Before we do the oath, we'll recognize Councilmember Rick's Ody for recusal.
I'm recusing myself again, because I was the planning commissioner.
Thank you. We're gonna hear that a lot these next few months. All right, we'll now go to the ear of oath.
Please stand for those of you who are going to testify on the items. You and each of you do solemnly state that this testimony you may give in the cause now and pending before this body shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Mr. Mayor, there is a request to continue this item to February twenty-first.
Great. Let's hear a motion and second to continue it. We have Councilwoman Soro and Councilwoman Zindejas. Any public comment on the motion to continue? Just speaking to the motion to continue. Please come forward. It's fine.
Just to be clear, it's to continue it, to speak about it today, or to wait till...
No, continue means we're gonna continue to a different date.
Oh, okay.
So, we wouldn't, we wouldn't address it today.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Okay, members, please cast your vote.
The motion is carried.
Thank you. Hearing sixteen, please.
Item sixteen is report from Development Services, recommendation to adopt resolution certifying the final EIR dash zero-five dash nineteen, adopting a statement of overriding consideration and approving a mitigation, monitoring, and reporting programs. Adopt resolution establishing the Century Villages at Cabrillo specific plan. Declare ordinance amending the California State University Research and Technology Center at Cabrillo, Long Beach, Vets Planet Development District to be renamed to the California State University Research and Technology Center Planet Development District, and repealing and removing the inclusion and reference to Villages at Cabrillo from Save Plan Development District, read the first time and laid over to the next regular meeting of the city council for final reading. Declare ordinance amending the land use district map to reflect the establishment of the Century Villages at Cabrillo specific plan, read the first time and laid over to the next regular meeting of the city council for final reading. And declare ordinance amending the Long Beach Municipal Code to add Century Villages at Cabrillo specific plan to the list of specific plans, read the first time, and laid over to the next regular meeting of the city council for final reading, District Seven.
Thank you. Recognizing Councilwoman Rick's Ody for recusal.
I'm recusing one more time, because I was on the planning commission.
Thank you. All right. We'll now go to Assistant City Manager Tatum.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. We're really excited to hear this item tonight, because we've been speaking earlier about affordable housing opportunities. So, this project is a really great opportunity to bring, to onboard some new development, affordable housing. So, I'd like to introduce Allison Spindler, our Planning Bureau Manager, to present this item.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'm pleased to be here with you this evening to present the proposed Century Villages at Cabrillo specific plan that would allow its supportive housing campus to expand and serve more people through the eventual addition of over five-hundred new housing units. As you may be aware, the Century Villages at Cabrillo is located in West Long Beach, east of the Terminal Island Freeway, and north of Pacific Coast Highway, as shown on the map here. Century Villages at Cabrillo is located on a portion of the larger U.S. naval housing facility that was closed in nineteen ninety-one. The Department of Defense transferred a twenty-seven-acre portion in nineteen ninety-seven to the nonprofit organization Villages at Cabrillo under the McKinney Act. The McKinney Act makes unused federal properties available to assist the unhoused population. The land was transferred for the purpose of providing transitional and permanent housing to the homeless and those at risk of becoming homeless. Today, Century Villages at Cabrillo is a twenty-seven-acre supportive housing campus that provides over, housing to over fifteen-hundred people on any given night. The supportive housing model offers wraparound services for the formerly homeless, unhoused veterans, families, and seniors who live there. The campus is located, as I mentioned, in West Long Beach, directly south, directly west of Cabrillo High. In terms of the existing zoning and land use designations, the zoning of the site is subarea D of Plan District Thirty-One, known as the Cal State University Research and Technology Center slash Villages at Cabrillo, Long Beach Vets Campus. The subarea promotes the adaptive reuse of existing buildings and supporting facility buildings for the express purpose of providing transitional housing and support services for the unhoused veterans and the unhoused population of the Long Beach metropolitan area. The general plan designation for the site is regional serving facility. When originally opened in nineteen ninety-seven, the campus primarily utilized rehabilitated former Navy housing. Over time, additional rehabilitation of buildings and new construction was introduced. Major redevelopment of the campus occurred over six phases, beginning in two thousand one and concluding in twenty twenty, as summarized on the slide. Currently, the campus is comprised of a total of eight-hundred-sixty-five dwelling units, approximately fifty-five thousand non-residential square feet, and about just over five-hundred parking spaces. The existing master plan serving Century Villages at Cabrillo has been implemented to capacity. Therefore, an updated plan is needed to allow the CVC campus to continue developing and expanding in order to serve more people. You might be asking yourself, what is a specific plan? A specific plan is a planning document that implements the goals and policies of the general plan, and contains detailed development standards and implementation measures to which future projects located within a specified geographic area must adhere, and represents the zoning regulations for that area. The proposed specific plan will support the current and future needs of the community by expanding the CVC capacity to accommodate increased demand for housing and services. The plan will guide redevelopment of antiquated buildings and underutilized portions of the campus. The proposed plan is also designed to streamline the planning, review, and approval process for future phases of development when proposed future expansions are consistent with the plan. And finally, the plan provides objective standards for long-term development and enhancement of the CVC community. Over the next ten years, the Century Villages at Cabrillo is seeking to redevelop portions of the community that consist of the, of the formal naval housing stock, transitioning those outdated structures to modern, affordable housing and service facilities, along with key site improvements. The specific plan serves as the master plan for a residential community that includes emergency, bridge, transitional, and permanent housing with support services and amenities. The specific plan regulates allowable land use, circulation, open space, and development standards. This slide includes a graphic on the left of the proposed future development being phased in to meet the needs of existing and future residents. New development would again replace older antiquated buildings, and the table on the right shows you the impacts of this expected development. The plan will accommodate a net increase of five-hundred-fifteen residential dwelling units, in addition to new amenities, educational facilities, commercial and administrative space, as well as parking. The specific plan conforms to the general goals, policies, and designations of the city's general plan, including the land use element, the urban design element, the mobility element, and the housing element. The plan is consistent with the regional serving facility place type. as the supportive housing campus serves the greater Long Beach metropolitan area. And more specifics related to general plan consistency are shown here on the slide. In accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act and CEQA guidelines, an environmental impact report was prepared and made available for review and comment. The draft E I R had a forty-five day public circulation period for comments. A final E I R, including responses to comments, was released on August twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two. An E I R errata with one minor correction was posted on the city's website in September. In accordance with CEQA guidelines, um, the, uh, I'm sha- I'm sharing here where we received comments from other agencies, as shown on the slide. And CEQA requires a mitigation monitoring and reporting program, known as an M M R P, for projects where mitigation measures are a condition of project approval, such as this one. The intent of the M M R P is to verify compliance with project design features and the measures identified in the E I R. There are six areas of mitigation monitoring, as shown here on the slide. Upon implementation of mitigation measures, these environmental impacts would be less than significant or mitigated to a less than significant level. On this slide, you'll see the three areas where significant and unavoidable impacts were found, including for short-term construction, uh, related air quality, greenhouse gas emissions, and construction-related noise. Under CEQA, when you have significant and unavoidable impacts, the city must adopt a statement of overriding considerations when certifying an E I R. This statement of overriding consid- uh, considerations is a process for the agency to support reasons for considering a project acceptable when significant impacts are infeasible to mitigate. The slide here summarizes, um, the reasons behind the city's statement of overriding conditions, given that this project implements, um, so much of our general plan, our policy goals and priorities, is consistent with our sustainable community strategies, improves quality of life, um, and improves multimodal mobility, in addition to providing that needed housing we are talking so much about. Public hearing notices were distributed on January ninth, and a legal notice was published in the Long Beach Press Telegram on January tenth. Staff has received two phone inquiries on this project to date. And with that, staff recommends, uh, the afford, uh, staff recommends certifying the final E I R, making findings of fact, adopting a statement of overriding considerations, and approving the M M R P, as well as adopting the resolutions and declaring ordinance as described on the slide, which I won't detail, uh, every word of again for you. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, is any public comment here on this item, sixteen? Okay, we'll take it behind the rail. Councilmember Uranga.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Allison's presentation. I met with, uh, with her earlier today, kind of full of you, who was to keep things was going on there. The Villages at Cabrillo has been a, an awesome, um, development. They've been doing great work with homeless veterans and homeless individuals over the many years. Glad to see that a city like this exists in District Seven, and that we've been doing our part to affect the, the homeless situation, not only here in Long Beach, but regionally. And the work that you've done is, has been great. The one concern I want to bring up is, is there somebody here from the villages that can maybe address this issue, and that's one about safety. There's a bullet here in the plan about, uh, enhancing the safety of the ability and connectivity of the Villages at Cabrillo community. And you know, in the past few years, there was some concern about being a wide-open campus. And it was closed at that time, and still there was a violation. Since then, that, I guess, uh, safety consideration has been removed. Uh, buses are now more accessible to the population there, which is great. It's much, it's much needed, but still the safety is for concern. The other way around, the concerns for safety, uh, is uppermost in my view, uh, in that area. So if somebody is here regarding that, or perhaps you can address about once, uh, on, on the, on the ticket for about the safety of the area. Appreciate it.
So Councilmember, um, Brian DeAndrea from Century is making his way to the microphone. But I also want to say, you know, in terms of buses and sort of increased access to the campus, that's been a really important thing that we've accomplished, uh, together over the last, um, five to ten years. But that's not to say safety is no longer a consideration. Safety is always a consideration. Even with this plan, there's been a lot of consultation with police and fire to make sure not only, uh, safety regarding events, but if there was some kind of emergency in access and exiting. So we've worked through a lot of those issues, and Brian's gonna talk to you about security on the site.
Thank you, Brian, for reading today.
Thank you, Christopher. Thank you, Councilman Mayor, uh, and the rest of the council. Thank you for, um, your interest in this item tonight. Uh, my name is Brian DeAndrea. I'm president of Century Villages at Cabrillo. Uh, the safety and livability of our community of close to fifteen hundred residents is of utmost and paramount importance to us. Like the broader community, I think we've seen an uptick in incidents, uh, over the past number of years. We've been very proactive in working with our local police department, with our Health and Human Services Department, with all our onsite partners to address those incidents. We've had a group of tenants organize themselves into a very active and productive union of tenants that has facilitated a very healthy dialogue with the management of the villages, and those meetings are ongoing. We've actually stepped up the, uh, private security on the campus o- over the past couple of years. We've had a lot of breaches of our, um, of our walls and borders and perimeter, uh, from persons that really have no business being on our campus. There have been encampments along the one oh three freeway that we've been working very closely with, um, city staff, public works, the police department, Health and Human Services to address. So we're very cognizant of this issue. I think we've been very proactive in trying to address the very real safety concerns of not only our residents, but our, you know, two hundred and fifty staff that work at the villages, both across our agency, as well as our partner agencies, you know, there are more than thirty different organizations that have a presence on the campus. So this will continue to be a very important, um, consideration for us, uh, not only as we continue to develop, but as we continue to operate the villages.
Fantastic. Thank you. Thanks, Brian. Uh, Councilwoman Zandehas?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a wonderful housing project and one-of-a-kind community in Councilmember Uranga's district. I want to extend my support of this project and projects like these that incorporate not only housing, but supportive care and resources, and that uplift green developments and sustainability overall. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so that satisfies public comment. Council comment members, please cast your vote.
Councilmember Duggan? The motion is carried.
Okay, now we'll take general public comment number one. Madam Clerk, if you could facilitate that.
John Gafford and Dave Shuka? Please approach the podium. Dave Shuka?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and, uh, council members. I'd like to speak briefly on, uh, the issue of electricity and electricity policy in Long Beach. I'd like to make reference, now the mayor just left, uh, reference to the mayor's, uh, plan for his first one hundred days in office. This, uh, Opportunity Beach Agenda, lovely document, clear, concise, nice visuals. Each of the, uh, sectors or policy areas has a list of concrete actionable deliverables. That is good. As we all know, things cannot be improved if they are not first measured. And I'd like to thank each of you council members, um, and the mayor, and even the city staff for, uh, the attention paid to the, already to the, uh, first sector, homelessness and housing. Uh, it's extremely important, and I look forward to the next update in two weeks. I'd like to address the last sector, uh, sustainability and resilient city. And quoting from, uh, the Looking Ahead portion on page forty-six of this document, "For generations, Long Beach has provided critical city services that have relied on revenue streams tied to the production of oil and fossil fuels." It continues, "We need to set our sights on sustainable alternative revenue opportunities that will build the resilience and prosperity of our city." Uh, ladies and gentlemen, uh, this is not a task for two thousand and thirty-five, or two thousand and thirty-four, or two thousand and thirty-three, or even two thousand and twenty-eight. It's a task for now. Frankly, it was a task for previous iterations of the city council, and because of their inaction, it is incumbent on each of you now today. It's a tremendous opportunity, though, uh, for jobs, for health and prosperity. And crucially, uh, it's something that other cities already know how to do and have shown that it's financially viable to do. Mr. Mayor, who's stepped out for a second, uh, as you know, uh, I have one perspective on how to do that, and that's, uh, to form a regional community choice aggregation and, uh, finally stop enriching a private utility, now private utility, S C E, off the backs of captive Long Beach ratepayers. That's one way, sure, but, uh, something is gonna have to be done specifically, um, by this administration to address electricity policy and how electricity rates are managed in this city. And what is done, uh, by the city in the first hundred days are gonna determine for the rest of this decade, but more importantly, for the rest of this administration, the options practically that we have. So I'd like to request, uh, that prior to the end of the mayor's first hundred days in office, prior to Earth Day this year, the city openly, explicitly addresses electricity policy and how electricity funding is gonna work in this city. Thank you.
That concludes the public comment.
Thank you. Well, now, uh, continuing with the agenda, we have item twenty-five, please.
Item twenty-five is a report from Utilities, recommendation to receive and file, a presentation from Long Beach Utilities Department, C D Y.
Thank you. So, uh, we know that we have a new Long Beach Utilities Department. We also know that, uh, we've seen some spikes in utility bills. So we, we thank, uh, our city staff for coming forward with the presentation. We've all received the questions, and I think it's, it's, so we can take our time with this one, I think, and really explain to people, uh, what's happening with our utility prices. Uh, so Mr. Modica?
Yes, uh, so Mayor, thank you for letting us put this on as a supplemental item, uh, so that we can get this urgently in front of the council. Uh, we wanted to not wait until February. We've done a lot of work to do outreach and try to explain to everybody what's going on, but I think it's really important that this body hear that and be able to ask the questions that you're receiving from residents. Uh, we've got a great presentation tonight from our Long Beach Utilities Department, and I will turn it to Chris Gardner and his team to walk through the questions, or the presentation and answer questions.
Uh, thank you, Tom. Uh, Mayor and City Council, this is a matter that's impacting every home in Long Beach, and so it's important to talk about this and recognize it, and, uh, we're looking into, uh, make changes in our practices to make this go away very quickly. So I have joining me, with me today is Tony Foster. He's my ma- manager at, um, uh, Public Utilities, and he is the one that is responsible for purchasing gas, and so, uh, he's the expert. Um, I used to do that in my prior life, and, um, I'm back in it now. Do, do I have this? Give me the light. Thank you. So to start with, I want to talk about the residential gas bill and explain how it is situated. So we have on there, uh, three charges. We have the gas service charge, which is a fixed daily service charge at about five dollars per month. We have the tier usage, so we have tier one. It's, um, up to, in the winter, fifty-two thermes during winter month. Then the tier two is a higher-priced volumetric charge, anything above fifty-two thermes. And then those three charges are the charges that the city is responsible for changing and setting. And then we have the A B thirty-two, uh, carbon reduction charge that we charge our customers. And then the one that is causing the issue is the cost of gas. So if you look on your residential gas bill, you'll see a line item, cost of gas. On this example, it's show sixty-five thermes at two dollars and eighty-four cents per therm, and that is the large charge that is causing the issues. So we did a comparison of an average single-family home using sixty-five thermes in the winter, and we compared January of last year against January this year of a bill. So you'll notice, like I said, the daily service charge, the tier one and the tier two usage, they are unchanged from last year. Those have not changed. The A B thirty-two fee has gone up, but it only composes about, uh, seven dollars on your gas bill. The one that has gone up and caused a problem is the cost of gas. If you look on that in January twenty-two, for sixty-five thermes, it would have cost sixty-one dollars. In January twenty-three, that sixty-one dollars has gone to two hundred and forty-seven dollars. So this is a graph of the historical prices that we're paying for natural gas in Long Beach. And if you look going back to the beginning of, uh, twenty-one, the, the price has been under a dollar per therm, uh, consistently, until really this summer, we had a couple spikes. But it wasn't until, uh, November, December, and then January that it really skyrocketed. So the cost of gas reflects the current market price of gas. We, we are in the open competitive marketplace. We compete against other gas buyers. And so the cost of gas on your bill shows the current market price that month. It's set on the first business day of each month, so for this month, it was set on January third. For February, it'll be set on, uh, February first. The price is largely based on the published market price index. It's published, so people can see it, the average price paid by gas buyers at the California border. The first of the month price sets the base price for nearly all gas purchased for Long Beach customers that month, including gas purchased under long-term contracts. And Long Beach also benefits from access to some locally-produced gas, which makes up between five and ten percent of our gas supply. So it's important to know that Long Beach passes the cost of gas directly to our customers without any markup. In other words, we do not make any profit on this line item on your bill. The line item that everybody is talking about, the cost of gas, we do not make a dime on that. The price of gas is posted publicly each month for customers to see. So if you go to our website, you can see the historical prices and this month's price. And what we do is, and the rest of the industry, we publish, uh, publicize that, and it changes on a monthly basis, so customers can realize what the current marketplace, uh, price of gas is, so that they can adjust their usage. So you're seeing on social media quite an outcry over gas prices, and th- this is a good thing in the sense that people are realizing it, and they can set their thermostats, turn them off, turn them down, uh, put on sweaters, put on, uh, slippers, and stay warm without using their heaters. So I want to talk about some of the factors that are causing this issue in California. So the gas market price is derived from simply supply and demand, both, uh, real supply and demand and perceived supply and demand. So California imports ninety percent of its gas supply from other states and Canada, and that includes Long Beach. So we import about ninety percent of our gas supply from West Texas, the Rocky Mountains, and sometimes even as far as ways, Canada. The demand factors impacting current high prices include recent colder weather in California. You've felt that in your homes. Um, and then with the, the drought in California, what that has done is, has reduced the supply of hydroelectricity in California. And because of that, California has had to fill that void by, uh, using, uh, electric generation plants that are powered by natural gas. So that has increased the demand for natural gas in California. The supply factors impacting the current price include maintenance and repairs on interstate pipelines. So we buy the gas, it's brought to California through interstate pipelines, and then it's delivered into the SoCal Gas Interstate System and then delivered to Long Beach. So there have been some issues on constraints and maintenance on the interstate pipelines. That's reducing the supply available to California. And then on top of that, if you remember, a few years back, we had the issue with Eliso Canyon Storage Facility. They have reduced the storage capacity in that, uh, storage facility. It has, and so the storage levels in California are at a, uh, five-year low. So like I said earlier, this is not a Long Beach issue. This is a state of California issue. Every, uh, gas utility, every gas, uh, consumer in Long, uh, California is feeling this. If you look at the slide, you'll see that, uh, we're right in line with the, uh, SoCal Gas, which is the largest gas utility in the United States, uh, San Diego Gas Electric, which is its sister gas utility in San Diego, and then the other municipal gas utility Palo Alto up north. So we took, uh, Long Beach Utilities took responsibility for gas purchasing starting January third. That was the first business day of the month. We took action. So we saw that the price came out at forty-seven dollars at the California border. Normally, the price is somewhere around five, six, seven dollars. It had shot to forty-seven dollars, the largest price that we've ever paid. It had shot to $47, the largest price that we've ever paid. So we took immediate action on day one to adjust our gas purchasing strategies, and by doing so, we saved Long Beach ratepayers millions of dollars just in the month of January alone. We maximized withdrawals of much less expensive storage inventory, offsetting gas we would otherwise buy at full market prices. We invoked a clause in the local gas purchase contract with the state of California that saved about $4.5 million for our customers, and then we applied about $1.3 million in unused reserves to soften the impact to our customers. So the creation of Long Beach Utilities immediately created greater transparency and oversight from the Board of Utilities Commissioners. So we did a very aggressive outreach to customers to try and get the word out as fast as possible that the prices are very high, so that they could take actions in their homes and try and reduce their gas usage. So this campaign included the press release, widespread media coverage and interviews, direct mail to all 150,000 customers in both Long Beach and Signal Hill, because we serve natural gas to Signal Hill, a bill stuffer, robocalls to every customer, messaging via social media, including paid advertising, messaging via websites, print advertising in the Press Telegram, the Long Beach Post, and the Long Beach Business Journal, Spanish, English ad displays, and 65 local grocery stores. We use the electronic billboard off the 405 freeway, and we've done direct outreach and flyers to council offices, and we've spoken at community groups. So these are just some examples of the customer outreach that we have been putting out since the first of the month, and some of the media coverage. It's not just in Long Beach. Obviously, there's media coverage through the LA Times and every newspaper in California. So customers, when they receive this bill, obviously, this is a significant increase. The average customer in Long Beach for a single-family home should realize about a $200 increase in their gas bill just in the month of January, and that's average. So you're going to have customers that have more than $200. You're going to have customers $250, $300, $300, $400 increase in their gas bill. So we encourage them to call our call center, and they can sign up for a payment arrangement plan where we can spread that cost over several months, so that lessens the burden to the customers. We'll accept payment plans as long as 36 months, or three years. We have a moratorium on gas shut-off, so no one has to fear having their gas shut-off during this time of high bills. We also offer a low-income discount of 20% discount for income-qualified customers. We have the LAHE program, it's a federal program, that on an agile basis, you can sign up, and if you qualify, you'll have, they will pay one, either gas bill or an electric bill, once a year. We have the low-income senior and low-income disabled utility users tax exemption program, so if seniors and disabled are income-qualified, they can sign up for this program, they get a 20% discount on their gas bill, they get six billing units at no cost from the water, they get $5 per month bill credit, and they get, they're exempt from the utility users tax on gas, water, electric, and phone bills. And then we also have a medical baseline therm allowance if you, on the gas side, will allocate additional thermes, which is at the lower tier-one rate. So with this, any type of crisis like this, there's misinformation, so I want to clarify some of the facts. All of California is experiencing high, very high gas bills. I want to make it very clear that the Board of Utilities nor the City Council have increased gas rates this winter. This is not a caused by a gas rate increase, this is the cost of gas going up. And so there's only been one gas rate increase in the last six years, and that was in 2020. The gas utility does not realize any profit from the high commodity cost, so people think that we're making a lot of money off this, the opposite is happening. The utility merger did not cause this in any way. In fact, their merger did increase transparency, and our Board of Utilities Commission called a special meeting to talk about this subject solely, and we've obviously enhanced the communication with the customers to try and get the word out. Looking forward, the current price of natural gas in California has dropped about 50% since the beginning of the month. That's a good sign, but it's still, even dropping 50%, it's much higher than normal. Another good thing is market prices in the rest of the country are, have stabilized, and they're much, much slower than their normal levels. I expect that California will soon follow suit on that. With warmer weather and some easing of the pipeline constraints, we should get access to that lower-priced gas, and it should, you should see that on your bills going down. And then the Federal Energy Information Administration, they publish quite a bit of data on energy, and they're projecting a 25% decrease in base and natural gas prices in 2023. Now, that is not the price that we pay, but it impacts the price that we pay. We're also, as I mentioned earlier, we're reevaluating our gas buying strategies to focus on both price stability and price protection for our customers. We're revising strategies to include maximizing storage injections, where we buy lower-priced gas during the summer months, inject it, and then where it's available to withdraw during the winter months when it's more expensive. We're looking at implementing price hedging, once market conditions are more conducive to that. That will provide a benefit of both market pricing and fixed pricing in our contracts. And then we will look at renegotiating local gas contracts to allow flexibility to adjust price paid if the market price drops during the month. So that concludes my report, and both Mr. Foster and I are available for answering any questions.
All right, let's start with Councilman McCur.
Yeah, thank you for the clarification. I really appreciated the concise way the information is presented. We know there's misinformation that's been floating around in many areas, and just a question for communication purposes, are those images, this slideshow, some of those snapshots available for us to use to communicate with, with our constituents on different platforms? Because again, the simplicity and the clarity in them, I think, is really helpful for people to see.
Yes, when you talk about the simplicity, we're trying to make sure we don't sugarcoat this. This is, this is a crisis, and so we want to make sure people understand that. So I'll make sure every council office gets access to those.
Thank you, and I know you said that the January pricing was set at the very end of December, and that's the way it works, and that you're looking at a 50% decrease at this moment, so the February prices will be set within the next week or so? Is that the timeline?
It's a published index, it'll come out on the first business day of the month. First business day of February is February 1st, so that's when we will know the price.
Okay. Yeah, we, we've gotten a lot of constituent outreach about this, I've gotten text messages about this, and just the concern, and I think for some folks, I know that I opened my gas bill this month. We do an auto-payment, and I am positioned to, if it's okay, you know, I don't open that, and I know not everybody's in the position to not open that the day that it comes. So when I did open it the day that it comes this time, I know how that impacted our family and our budget. So as we continue to move forward, the more information you can give us to share with folks, to give them a heads-up, is critical moving forward, but thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Councilman Austin.
Thank you, and thank you for explaining the dramatic increases. I think you, your department has been as transparent as you possibly can be, proactive in outreach and communications to ratepayers throughout the city, and obviously to councils as well, kind of giving us a heads-up. I will just say, I do appreciate that, and I think our Long Beach Utilities should be, be commended for that work. And obviously, these prices, these rate hikes are, are no fault of our own or our departments here. This is, this is a phenomenon that seems to be just California?
Yes.
And why is that?
We're, we're at the end of the pipeline system, and so, like I said, we have huge demand in California, and you combine that with having to import 90% of our gas supply, we're pretty much captive to the marketplace. And so if, back in the 90s and 2000s, the pipelines used to have only one place to send that gas, and that was towards west, towards California. They have built pipeline extensions, and so now that gas can move wherever the market deems it moves. And so if there's constraints in California, it'll move elsewhere, and so that impacts our supply that's available to California.
Okay, well, so, I think the biggest issue here is with these dramatic increases, and hopefully, they won't, they won't sustain and will drop significantly soon. But I'm concerned, and I think many of my colleagues, most of us are concerned about folks who don't have the means to pay those dramatic increases. For most middle-class families aren't going to be able to absorb this, and so, you know, those lower-income families are really going to be hurting, and particularly seniors. What, what kind of provisions are we making to, to, to deal with those, those situations?
So we're off about, if a senior is a low-income, they can call us and sign up for our program, and they will get a 20% discount off the bat on all gas bills going forward, and so I encourage them to take advantage of that program. Then on top of that, we will extend the payment. So if you have a $200, $300 gas bill, and you can't afford that, we'll, we'll let you pay that, we'll spread out that pain over as much as three years. So you'll have at least 36 months to pay it off.
Okay, that, that's generous, and I, I think one of the unintended consequences are maybe to a positive net to our general fund through utility users tax. Do we, and I guess maybe this is a question for city manager, do we have any estimate in terms of how that has impacted us, and do we, as a council, have the ability to perhaps give that back, or those, those increases back to our residents and ratepayers?
That is something that we can look into. We don't know what that effect is right now. This is a very short-term spike that comes up and down. We can certainly do some scenarios and see what the cost of, of gas is, and see if there's a possibility there. Again, our intent is not to make any money off of this, but we do have a UUT on the bill right now, so we can certainly look at that and see what our options are.
We'll definitely be watching that, that very closely, and over the next couple of months. Again, thank you for the, the report, and look forward to watching this issue closely.
Thank you. Councilman Zanejas.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you very much, Mr. Gardner, for that presentation, and also for meeting with my office and answering all the thousands of questions that we had for you. One of the things that I'm very, very thankful for, and like Councilmember Austin said, one of our main concerns are those residents in our area that can't observe that, that cost. So it really makes me happy that we're so flexible to be able to give them 36 months to be able to pay that off. I think that that's great. Also, I would like to confirm that in your outreach, you're also doing outreach in other languages, because I know that that's also of concern to my, you know, to me and my colleagues, to make sure that we have other languages or outreach in other languages. If you could confirm that and let us know what other languages your outreach is going out in?
Yes, so, so that's also a very big concern for my Utilities Commission. And so all the outreach that we're doing, any of the major outreach is available in Kamai, Spanish, and Tagalog, and English, obviously.
Thank you, that's very important. So I know that when we met, we talked about, you know, that this isn't something that's going to continue going forward, hopefully, fingers crossed, but that hopefully, we will only see a spike in January, and hopefully, no more than February. But I do appreciate all the work that's going into making sure that we, example, that, that the utilities aren't shut off for those that have those high bills that can't afford them. So for that, and, and all the rest that I just said, thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Cur.
Yeah, on that note, I just want to say that the Long Beach Community Action Partnership has a utility assistance program for folks who may need extra assistance at that, at this time. They're online at LBCAP.org, Long Beach Community Action Partnership. Their energy assistance program is a great program to look into.
Thank you. Councilman Super.
Thank you. I just wanted to publicly thank Mr. Gardner for personally addressing some of those customer service issues that have come through our office. And speaking of customer service, I'd like to acknowledge Tony Foster also, just over the years, just have done an excellent job at addressing issues that come through our office, so thank you for that. And lastly, I just wanted to acknowledge our former administrative deputy city manager, Rebecca Garner, in the audience, so, and nice to have a celebrity sighting tonight. Good to see you, Peggy.
All right, thank you. So before we go to public comment, just want to, you know, chime in and just thank our team, our Utilities Department, I got to use, get used to saying that, you know, Chris and Tony for leading by talking about what we can do to help people make it through. And I think it's great that we have control, because we have our local utility, we have control over shut-offs, over the programs, to help people, you know, plan out their payments, and I think that's, that's important. We do have to watch this, though, because I, we may have to think about more things that we can do to help people, because this was, this hurt, right? This was right after Christmas, right? So, so we want to watch this, so whenever you want to get back on the agenda and update the City Council, don't hesitate. All right, we'll now go to public comment. We have three members of the public, Dave Shukla, Mrs. Thomas, and Victory Barra. Please come forward.
Dave Shukla, their district, 600% increase in two months. First thing that must be said is that the 20% discount for seniors, low-income ratepayers, it has to be better communicated throughout the city. Our most vulnerable ratepayers need support, and the City Council should consider making the discounts mandatory. Don't wait for people to sign up, just make them mandatory for seniors, low-income, and even for students. Second thing that should be said is that while there are some market forces outside the city's control, loss of hydro, limits on international supply, pipeline issues, and of course, our national pastime of price gouging Californians, there is something other cities in California have already started doing, and that's banning natural gas in homes, and switching heating and cooling to electric options, and ending the dependence on natural gas entirely. That would solve the problem structurally. Third thing to be said is what specifically Long Beach can do that other Californian cities cannot do, which is to end the dependence on using natural gas for electricity generation. As many of you know, my home is directly across the street from the AES plant on Studebaker. This facility needs to be closed. Why? Not because Dave wants it, not because it would be good for the environment, not because there's really no way to meet our long-term greenhouse gas reduction goals without closing it, but because specifically, council members, the alternatives, if you want clean energy alternatives, wind, water, solar, could all be piped in using the existing electricity paving from my backyard. And it's torturous, to be honest, that I've had to live through a scenario where we, as a species, can't just make that transition. It would be so simple. Now, finally, we're hoping that this is a one-time thing, but it's more likely than not that this will become cyclical. Some of the reasons that Director Gardner already stated, being at the end of the pipeline system, aren't going to change. And moreover, this city has some structural problems with how it generates funding. It's because ratepayers, gas utilities, water sewer, Long Beach Utilities, but also Southern California Edison electricity ratepayers, these rates subsidize the cheaper rates the city uses to drill for oil, and that eventually has to stop. This is something that is going to be a recurring problem, and it needs a long-term structural solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mrs. Thomas.
Greetings, Mayor and City Council. I stand here as an advocate for my father, who's 87 years old, lived in this, in his home since 1968. We, in November 9th through December 12th, we received a bill for $436.23 for natural gas, which did not include the water, it did not include the trash. So they said we used 187 thermes. So I called the Utility Department, and a very nice lady named Patricia assisted me, and so I said, what we'll do is shut it off. So between December 12th and January 12th, we, we just cut it off during the day, and instead of decreasing the thermes, the thermes went up to 218 thermes. So our bill was $759.66 for the natural gas, $45.20 for the water, $35.57 for the refuge, for a total of $840.43 for one bill. So I called my city councilman, Councilman Yoranga, yesterday, then I called again today, and he contacted me with Mr. Gardner, and I want to publicly thank you. Within two hours of calling him, he got on the case and, and came to have someone come and check this out, because $759.66 is too much for anybody in this room or this city to have to pay, especially when we have a senior citizen. 87- have to pay, especially when we have a senior citizen, 87 years young, a widower. And it's not about a payment plan, it's just that there should not be any bill. I checked with my neighbors, nobody had these thermes. So, Mr. Garner, I want to thank you for your team coming out. They were professional, kind, they went through everything, and so we're hoping for the best regarding this moving forward. But I just wanted the public to know, one person, I think we get the Guinness Book of World Records for our neighborhood, $759.66, 4520, 3557, then there was tax, I missed that, that was $38.46, which came to a total of $878. Now, if somebody can beat that bill, please let me know. I'm not angry, I'm very thankful to you, Mr. Garner, for what you did today. But I wanted the public to know what one person, 87 years old, educator here in Long Beach, a pillar in this community, what he's going through. Because the bill is in his name, but I'm his daughter, so I'm going to advocate for him. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Mrs. Thomas, I just want to say, thanks for coming down and talking to the council. We hear from, we hear when things go, don't go well all the time, but you came and said things were on the wrong track, but your staff intervened, that's quality public service, that's what we stand for in the city of Long Beach. We thank you for coming down and informing us. And our utility services department, please, let's make sure that we get this resolved. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Next is Victory Barra.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Victory Barra, Public Affairs Manager to SoCal Gas, to the city of Long Beach and 13 other cities within the region. I'm just here to reiterate some of the information that was given to you all already. You obviously have your own utility department, however, SoCal Gas plays an integral part in the transportation of natural gas to the city of Long Beach. So I do have a statement on behalf of SoCal Gas as well. The high bills are a result of historically high natural gas prices in the Western United States. SoCal Gas doesn't set the price for natural gas. Instead, natural gas prices are determined by national and regional markets. SoCal Gas buys natural gas in those markets on behalf of residential and small business customers, and the cost of buying that gas is billed to those customers with no markup. So very similar as to what was mentioned earlier. And some of the facts as to why natural gas is so expensive, according to the U.S. Energy Information Administration, a number of factors are contributing to higher natural gas commodity prices. One of many, widespread below normal temperatures on much of the West Coast, including Washington and Oregon, high natural gas demand for heating by customers in areas with below natural temperatures, reduced natural gas supplies to the West Coast from Canada and the Rocky Mountains, reduced interstate pipeline capacity to the West Coast because of pipeline maintenance activities in West Texas, and low natural gas storage overall on the West Coast. So I think many of the things that I mentioned were all obviously mentioned as well, but those are the many reasons. And SoCal Gas is also trying to do what it can to make sure that we inform our constituents as well as our cities and neighboring cities as well. So thank you for the time and if there's any questions.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rick Soudi.
This is actually just a follow-up to the comment that Councilmember Kerr made about the Long Beach Community Action Partnership program. Is it possible to get on our website links to programs with city community-based partners that might be of assistance to residents with high bills? So that way, people aren't kind of like searching around for information, but they can go and play, see the programs that the city has as well as some of our community partners.
I believe, and Mr. Foster can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we do have a link to their site because they handle the liheat program that I mentioned on our behalf.
Okay. And then just a follow-up to that, for the programs that are available, are they also available to folks that are undocumented in our community?
As far as I know, yes. We do not ask.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And I'll also say, I know Councilmember Yoranga needed to be excused, but we want to acknowledge him also for connecting Mrs. Thomas's family to you as well. All right, members, please cast your vote.
All right, item 20, please.
Item 20 is a report from city attorney, recommendation to declare ordinance amending the Long Beach Municipal Code relating to parklets read and adopted as read, citywide.
Thank you. We have three members of the public here to speak. Jeff Miller, Melinda Cotton, Brian Cochran, please come forward. Jeff, you're up first.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I'm Jeff Miller, I live in Belmont Shore. Council members, each week you make decisions which affect the city, some fairly routine and simple, but others which have significant and lasting impact. Your decisions should be informed by timely, accurate and complete information from city staff and other sources. I'm concerned that you are not receiving the guidance you need to make the best decisions. Last week, you approved several changes to the ordinance governing parklets. There was minimal discussion of these changes or of the many concerns expressed previously at these meetings by citizens. One such concern is the blocking of bus stops on Second Street by delivery trucks. Councilwoman Duggan asked for information from staff, including this, quote, "regarding deliveries which have become a problem sometimes with parklets," unquote. Public Works Director Eric Lopez responded as follows, quote, "regarding the deliveries blocking potential parking lanes, and I've heard bus stops, that is not allowed. We do have some inspectors that work with our police department, making sure that our delivery trucks are using the designated areas." This was not a complete or useful answer. First, what inspectors? I am on Second Street almost daily, I have never seen an inspector. I hear a report from a police department officer every month. When asked about traffic, parking and bus stop violations, he has never mentioned an inspector or enforcement. Second, there are no designated areas for delivery trucks on Second Street, none. All loading zones were removed years ago by the Belmont Shore Parking Commission. Ironically, they were converted to parking spaces because of the severe shortage of public parking. The blocking of bus stops is ongoing. These violations occur daily and frequently and for 20 minutes or more at a time. I've provided several examples, images of trucks parked at bus stops in your packet. As you can see, these are all current and recent. These violations prevent bus access by someone in a wheelchair and at times by anyone, because a bus will not stop if they cannot reach the curb. The city is at risk by not correcting this. Already, the city is spending millions of dollars to remedy ADA access violations mandated by a court settlement. Will this be the next ADA violation to cost the city money? Please deal with these violations now rather than wait and cost the taxpayers more by the failure to enforce the law. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Next is Melinda.
Good evening, Mayor Richardson and council members. My name is Melinda Cotton. I had expected to need to speak to all of you today because of parklets and about the lack of adequate public noticing of parklet applications in the revised ordinance. I had hoped, even expected, to hear back from my emails to Public Works, the city attorney, or other city management or elected officials. I sent those over the weekend and over the previous week, and we've actually been trying for a year to understand how this is all going to work, but I've heard nothing back. The ordinance you're voting on this evening is inadequate in regard to public noticing. Giving Public Works wide latitude in prescribing noticing, the method of noticing is clearly insufficient. The failure could be easily remedied. The council this evening could add to the parklet's ordinance itself or create an additional requirement that public noticing for the new parklet should follow the requirements of Municipal Code 21.21.302, noticing requirements for hearings already in the Municipal Code. Certainly, the impacts of the private takeover of dozens of valuable public street parking spaces in a parking-impacted business district such as Second Street should be treated as seriously as zoning changes, which Muni Code 21.21.32 does. The required noticing should include what 21.21.302 does, posting, for example, a sign of at least 30 inches by 40 inches on each street facing, street face of the real property that is subject of the hearing. It should list the detailed, specific requirements of the notice. It should require the mailing of a notice to all property owners within several hundred feet. An interested and concerned party should be able to sign up for email notification. It seems that posting a notice of unknown size for 30 days on the property in question is basically all that's required of Public Works for this public, these parklet or applications. And if one fails to see the notice and presents concerns within 30 days, you have to pay $1,000 for an appeal hearing. The current minimal posting requirements will unfairly, be unfair to neighboring retail businesses, office tenants, residents, this disabled and coastal visitors. And again, I ask that you simply add Muni Code 21.21.302 posting requirements for new permanent parklet applications. Thank you very much. We certainly hope this is resolved. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Cochran. Brian.
Honorable Mayor, council members, I'm used to coming before you with a pretty elaborate written statement to talk about in detail because I like to get the words right. Today, I'm here a little bit more with an emotional moment and want to try and connect with you on a more resonant level. Some of you who were here in August last year may remember that I was honored by my class of the Neighborhood Leadership Program to speak before you and talk about the impact that program had on me and my classmates. One of the things we took away from that, that class last year, which was four months in duration, was a commitment and a renewed commitment to our communities, to the community organizations we represent, to our neighbors and how we engage with you and other city officials. All of my classmates, some 22 strong, felt like we were energized by that engagement with you one-on-one, that you told us to do this work, to be out there, to represent our communities, to talk to our neighbors. We do that and we continue doing that six months, nine months later. So that is context. Our goal is to make a difference. Here today, I'm speaking about parklets, but I'm also speaking about the community engagement in general. The ordinance sought here, the revision was sought by a former third district council member after four years of having no issues with it as it stood. She said that there were issues and problems with the mechanism, but instead of saying, fix the mechanism, she said toss it out entirely, disenfranchise those community groups, my neighbors, my fellow residents who care enough to come to you. Adding $1,000 appeal to the cost of doing this going forward is an onus to the residents and the community groups. You're saying, don't engage. That's what the message is. Your communities need outreach and engagement on this and all issues going forward. You and council members should be proactive. We hope that there will be studies on the issue of parklets as they're meaningful and permanent now, town halls that engage with your communities, meaningful surveys, not just a perfunctory one. Businesses already have such access and they push the notion that what's right for them is right for their communities as a whole. That's not always the case. One business owner last week came before you, Kurt Schneider of Iconix Fitness, and he insulted community orgs as a whole, dismissing them as just fun clubs for pugs supporters. He said, we're essentially dog owners that just want to gather and have a voice. That is not the case. Most of these community organizations are in existence for a long time and deeply committed to their communities. So I would ask, you've heard from us as before on a number of fronts, most of the council members over the last year, we've made outreach to Councilman Zanejas and Dr. Sorrow before and asked you to come down and walk that area with us to see firsthand. I'll extend that invitation to our new council members as well. Councilwoman Kerr, Councilwoman Joanie Rick Soudi, and of course, Ms. Duggan. You were kind enough to sit with us and while you're a candidate, I would encourage you to engage with your community groups again on this front since it's being changed right now. I hope that you'll put some robust mechanisms in place for us all. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That satisfies public comment. Councilmember Duggan.
Thank you for coming today. The reason I am doing this job is to engage with the community. And I want to make sure that you know I am going to be listening because the things that I want to make sure are handled are the ADA sightlines and when we do have deliveries. I'm a resident as well as a council member down there. So I'd like to ask Eric, if we can, Eric Lopez, just as far as addressing the enforcement with deliveries on the bus stops, deliveries aren't taking up parking spots, they're taking up, so we had talked about enforcement for that. I just want to make sure that we have a plan in place for that. And I want to clarify one thing, and it's been brought up several times. The appeal for residents does not cost them. The appeal is for a business, a business owner who has been denied an application or an outside resident or a person who is coming back to appeal for a business that's been rejected. Can we clarify that, please?
Sure. So first to answer the first question, we do have inspectors for our rights-of-way that work with us to ensure compliance with our Municipal Code. It is those inspectors, right-of-way inspectors, that will coordinate with our local businesses and the police department to ensure that, that the, that the businesses are using the appropriate locations. A comment was made that loading zones were removed a while back. I don't have any history on that, but if there is not appropriate loading zones, then our traffic engineer is available to help coordinate and identify potential locations to address these kinds of challenges. We build, we do build loading zones where appropriate, especially in areas that may have an inadequate amount, an area that has a lot of deliveries, like parts of Belmont Shore. So that's the first part. We do have staff that's looking into this and we are very interested in addressing these challenges and making sure that there's, there's a good partnership among the different players involved. The second part of the question, the appeal. For residents, there won't be a need to appeal if they participate under the process that we've outlined. So their participation does not come with a fee. The businesses that may not like the staff decision, they're the ones that may or may not decide to appeal a decision, and then that will go through the process, they will pay for the fee for the cost of the appeal. I would ask Vanessa to talk about the situation where a resident may not participate in the process and will, and may, until the end, and may be interested in appealing, that's more of a legal question that I think Vanessa can address.
Thank you, Eric. Hello, Mayor and members of the city council. I just want to clarify, so Eric specified that is, as the ordinance is before you today, everyone can participate without a fee, right? Everybody has an opportunity, whether it's the applicant or members of the public, to participate in the process and provide written letters of support or opposition. Once that proceeds through the process, right? So we know that as the ordinance is currently written, if there is a written opposition, there is a recommendation that is going to be made by the Director of Public Works to the city council, and that permit will then be evaluated by the council. If those decisions are final, the decisions that the city council makes will be final. If they're at the beginning stage of the application process, if there is no opposition, that allows the Director of Public Works to make a determination on that permit. If after the Director of Public Works issues a permit, the public or a permutee has an opportunity to appeal. At that point, whether it's a permit, a person of the public or the permutee, there will be an appeal fee that applies as the ordinance is currently written. So just to clarify one more time, in order to participate, it's free to participate, but the moment that the Director of Public Works issues a permit, because there wasn't an, there wasn't an opposition in that initial noticing phase, it then triggers an appeal fee if there is a person of the public or the applicant that's appealing. But the first 30 days, while there's notification, they can write a letter of opposition and then it will come before city council and everyone has a voice to speak against, to oppose that, that application.
Yeah, that, that's correct. And they also have an opportunity to, to come before the City Council because that consideration will be a noticed meeting. So there will be the opportunity to not only submit a written support or opposition, but then also to present that comment and make a public comment during the City Council's consideration of the item.
And finally, I just want to talk about the notification. I mean, we, we should get some clarification on how notification is for the parklet applications. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Members, please cast your votes.
The motion is carried.
Twenty-one, please.
Item twenty-one is report from Public Works, recommendation to declare ordinance amending the Long Beach Municipal Code to temporary suspend certain provision during the proclaimed local emergency caused by homelessness, read the first time and laid over to the next regular meeting of the City Council for final reading, declaring the urgency thereof, and declaring that this ordinance shall take effect immediately. City Y. And this item requires two votes.
Thank you. There's no presentation. We had that earlier. Two members of the public, public comment, John Gafford, Stephen Smith, please come forward.
Hi, thank you very much. My name is John Gafford, and I appreciate the time to come here and speak about some matters. I don't know if I selected the right number, which is twenty-one, that you guys are talking about.
Twenty-one is the homeless emergency.
But this has to do with homeless.
Okay, that's fine.
So anyway, I'm gonna just try to explain this briefly, and then whoever needs my contact information can get it from me. So I used to live in Long Beach. I don't know more. I had a home. I revamped the whole home, got it with an ADU and everything. It's beautiful now. It's almost done, almost done. And I wanted to try to give back to a community where I used to live. So I want to do the low-income renting and housing through Section Eight voucher programs, but there's a lot of problems with that. And one of the problems that I went through with LA Section Eight, which might be different from Long Beach Section Eight, is the tenant complained all the time that they didn't have the money, but Section Eight counselors or advisors said they do have the money. They said, "We wouldn't give our portion if they didn't have the money that they're supposed to pay to me." But then the tenant turned around and said, "Because I have COVID, I don't have the money." And then, as you know, the law that came out, I had to go without that money for quite some time. I think if I'm gonna allocate a home and try to help out, I think two things. One, Section Eight needs to pay the whole bill. Then they go after whoever and get it back out of them, who is the tenant. Two, if the gas prices, like I'm hearing, is pretty high, who's gonna pay the gas bill? Because most likely, they may not have the gas, the money to pay those gas bills and all of that. So I'm saying, I want to help and give back to the community, but at the same time, I don't want to cut my toe because I have a mortgage and things to pay as well. And I think it's great with all of these ideas and things that I'm hearing here today. But I decided to take time out of my day for this one item. Well, I got, this, this item is under homelessness. I have two other ones. They're not related to this. So whoever is in charge of these vouchers to help out homeless or anybody so they won't be homeless, I think it's a good idea. But we have to figure out who's gonna pay the bill because I need the money so I can pay the mortgage and take care of myself.
Thank you, Mr. Gafford.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Next is Stephen Smith.
And Mr. Mayor, Teresa Chandler, our deputy city manager, can help connect and answer some of those questions.
Fantastic. Teresa Chandler's on the way to talk with you. All right, Stephen Smith here? Okay. We'll take it back behind the rail. Members, please cast your vote.
Motion carried for the first vote.
All right, let's do it again.
The motion is carried for the second vote.
Thank you. Okay. So I think, Madam Clerk, you might have to help me out. Do we have item seventeen we still need to do? Okay, let's go to seventeen.
Item seventeen is report from economic development, recommendation to amend the purchase and sale agreement with Armory Arts Collective LP for the surplus property located at eight five four East Seventh Street to add an option to lease the subject property in lieu of a fee purchase, District One.
Thank you. It's been moved to second. We have a brief staff report here.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. The item before you is related to former Long Beach Armory located at eight fifty-four East Seventh Street. On December seventh, twenty-twenty-one, City Council authorized a purchase and sale agreement with the Armory Arts Collective LP for a sixty-four unit affordable housing project. The purchase price was set at five point one five million dollars to be paid through a fifty-five-year residual receipts loan. Subsequent to this approval, the developer applied for tax credit financing but was not awarded. To make the loan application more competitive, the developer has requested to add an option to lease to the purchase agreement, allowing the purchase to be converted to a long-term lease, which would make the application more competitive under tax credit financing rules. The general terms and conditions of the option would be for a term of fifty-seven years at a base rent of one dollars per year and additional rent. As additional rent, the city would receive a residual receipts payment comprised of a pro-rata share of fifty percent of the cash flow from the project once all obligations, including deferred developer fees, are paid. The project would retain affordability restrictions, including sixty-three of sixty-four units restricted to lower-income households at or below eighty percent of area median income. In compliance with the surplus land exemption under Government Code Section three seven three six four C, forty percent or twenty-sixth of the units would be restricted to lower income, and of those, thirteen would be restricted to very-low-income households at or below fifty percent of area median income. The fee interest of the property would not be encumbered, but the lease, lessy may encumber its leasehold interest. The lease would also contain industry-standard lease mortgage protections, and any lease created by this option will come back before council in open session for approval. Therefore, the recommendations for City Council to amend the purchase and sale agreement with the Armory Arts Collective to add the option to lease city-owned exempt surplus property located eight fifty-four East Seventh Street. Thank you, and this concludes my staff report.
Thank you. Councilwoman Zandehas.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an area in much need and supportive resources, and also an area very important to me. I know the development will bring much-needed housing opportunities to my district, and I'm proud to have been a big supporter of this development since the beginning. These types of developments are key components of our efforts regarding homelessness as well as raising the affordable housing stock that we have in our city and that we need to increase. I was wondering, Mr. Vallejo, if you could please state the advantages of retaining this ownership as a city? I know that it makes it more competitive, and maybe you could just say a little bit more on how we can help them and help ourselves, actually, also by keeping this.
Sure. So both the, the previously contemplated loan structure and the, what we're presenting to you here today as a lease option, both have a very similar financial structure to the city. So the economics to the city don't change, but for the fact that we do, in fact, retain fee title. So this also will not be paying down against any loan, so the value of the property ultimately would still remain with the city of Long Beach.
Thank you very much for that. Very, very supportive of this item.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Austin?
I second that.
Fantastic.
Congratulations.
Housing in this area is important, so let's do what we can to save this project. There's no public comment here? Okay, members, please cast your vote.
The motion is carried.
I believe eighteen is withdrawn, so we have item nineteen.
Item nineteen is report from Human Resources, recommendation to execute an agreement with VOYA for healthcare-specific stop laws, reinsurance coverage, and execute any amendments necessary to maintain current benefit levels and remain in compliance with state and federal laws. City Y.
Is there a second? It's been moved to second. Is there any public comment? Members, please cast your vote.
The motion is carried.
Thank you. Now we'll move to general public comment, too. Is there any public comment?
Julian Xavier, Emily Hansen, Calvin Anderson, and John Gafford. Please approach the podium. Julian.
Mayor Richardson, I am very happy that you're the mayor because I prayed for you because I wasn't gonna talk to Suzie, God bless her, but I needed someone who really understands what's happening. And what I realize is prior Mayor Garcia at, you know, he checked out, and he really wasn't listening. I really feel like you're the one that's gonna make the difference and make history. Who am, who am I? I'm Julian Xavier. I am the first woman to open a cannabis testing lab in your city. The city of Long Beach said, "We will give you four hundred and forty-five thousand to get into business, not at all at once, but at every step alongside the way." Emily Armstrong pulled the funding. We came down to City Hall, we rallied. She left. The damage is still done, right? I'm now in my state license. I have, my state application is going on right now, right? My contractor, I just saw him today, a hundred thousand dollars. My equipment, over five hundred thousand dollars. I want to share some statistics with you guys. Since inception, California has received over five hundred million in taxes, right? One point seven billion in sales tax, four, four, four point four billion in revenue for tax revenue, two point two billion in cannabis exercise tax. Do you understand that testing is the highest paid because no other license can go through without testing? They can't even get on the shelves, right? Why won't you give me what I need to open my, my business? What I would like to have happen is that, put us back on the agenda, right? They changed it to where they're giving us grants based on square footage. That doesn't make sense. It should be based on license sites. Everybody shouldn't get four hundred and forty-five thousand, right? But you look at the license site that actually really need that money to survive. Without a testing lab for social equity, they're gonna have to go to somewhere else and pay that price, right? I'm treating them as social equity. Any other business that's not social equity will pay top price, right? It's important that I'm here. So give us a chance to do what we need to do. Testing did sixty billion since the inception. It's billions of dollars on the table. This is tax money that you could be receiving. We're on Anaheim. We're on the whole stroke. I got a bullet hole in my, in my, in my wall. You know what I mean? Give us what we need so we can move forward, and then we could uplift the community, and we can change everything on Anaheim. You know, where's our council member on Anaheim? She never speaks up for us. You never say nothing for us. We're there in your district, like you're not gonna do nothing to help us. I'm coming down here to talk to you guys over and over since last year. Things have to stop. Please put us back on the agenda.
Thank you. Your time is up.
And review it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Emily Hansen.
Hello, Council. Give me one second here. Okay, well, my issue is very specific in my neighborhood. I'm a member of District Five. I'm in Bixby Knolls. And at this time, I would just like to make you all aware of the recent damage that many of the private property on my street has received because of these eucalyptus trees that have fallen. And so there have actually been four trees that have fallen since December thirty-first, so just within this month. Obviously, we've had very bad weather. But I do believe that there is some neglect on the city's part in getting those trees assessed with, just, you know, with, with proper time. Because often, and within, in our case, a tree fell straight onto our property, and we had asked to have that tree removed as early as June of last year. It was supposed, it was allegedly scheduled to be removed, but obviously, it wasn't before it collapsed. And so that was on January fifteenth of this, this month. Again, you know, I've talked to many residents, and in many cases, there are efforts on, on behalf of the property owner to get the trees removed. And again, it's just a slow process. And I guess my main concern is just proper financial compensation on behalf of the city. Personally, last year, I received compensation from the city because of another fallen tree that happened in twenty-twenty-one. However, I did have a neighbor that said that his claim was denied. And so something I noticed on the claim form was a question about whether or not the damage was more or less than ten thousand dollars. I guess I would just like to request more transparency in the claim process and why some of these decisions are made, whether the city approves the claim and pays out like they did in my case, or with my neighbor's case, why it was denied. Yes. And so I believe residents affected by the fallen tree should receive full financial compensation for the private property damaged. I don't think that it should be the financial responsibility of the property owner or the, or their insurance to take care of it. So yes, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Kelvin Anderson.
Hello, everyone. My name is Kelvin Anderson. I'm the owner of the world-famous VIP Recce. Have been in business now, this is year number forty-four, on the corner of Pacific Coast Highway and Long Beach Boulevard. I mean, and Pacific Coast Highway and Martin Luther King. I'd like to congratulate Mayor Richardson and the newly-elected council members to your post, and I feel real good about the direction of the city and, and plan to work all I can with you guys. I come tonight to say thanks for the support and being with us on this journey to preserve the world-famous VIP Recce sign, which is a Long Beach historic landmark and the second only African-American landmark in Long Beach. Our new business model is working very well for us, and it's lately, we've been getting out in the community, meeting the community and connecting with stakeholders here in the city. I'd like to especially thank Congressman Robert Garcia for all his help along the way. I'd like to thank Ron DeLove, a dream creator, for her leadership and hard work getting us to where we are now. I'd like to thank my daughter, who's, would be here but not here. She's my chief of staff. I'd like to- I'd like to thank her for her hard work and support. Okay, I also want to thank the Port of Long Beach for the help that we have received from them, and not only that, the Arts Council of Long Beach, terrific partners. I'd like to thank everyone else for supporting us in the preservation of the VIP sign. I'd like to thank, oh, I need Mayor Richardson, the councilman, the city council, Tom Modica, Linda Tatum. We look forward, we're working with you all to also continue moving forward with the preservation of the VIP record situation. I invite everyone to stop by VIP. We just recently opened a new recording studio and a creative space to work with the young people in the community. I am a little shaken. Just before I came here, one of my favorite customers came in and informed me that, and I saw it earlier, come across my phone as a news report of the young man who was killed today, which was his grandson. And that was looking forward to graduate and move into the military. So I want to thank you all for your support, and good night.
And thanks for coming down. Our final speaker is John Gafford. Is John here? Okay.
Well, I'm done. I want to just bring up two, two things that, again, has nothing to do with homeless. The first thing is, every city has a Hall of Fame for musicians, producers, and writers and things like that. And there's a place in each of these cities that have these, you know, individually talented people posted up somewhere. And Long Beach, unless you guys know something that I don't know, I don't think Long Beach has that. And it's a suggestion if you guys could do that for, you know, yeah, people know names like Snoop Dogg and all that, but there's other people who have done all of these talented things that I think we should give acknowledgement to. Another thing that I want to bring up real quick is, I'm a small business owner. I do adaptive technology training for visually impaired. And I'm looking at this city, the city where I came from, to give back in a way, but I think we need to have a place sort of like it could be connected to the Senior Citizen Center, where blind and visually impaired people can go and receive this technology The Brell Institute is in Los Angeles. It's near Vermont and Santa Monica. There's a Brell Institute that's in Orange County. But it would be great if we could have something like that, where I could lead it on and get it going with the individually talented people that I have in helping out and getting our visually impaired people, where they can get jobs and things through the Department of Rehab, but they need training places to go. So that's something that I would like to talk to somebody to create this business in Long Beach. So I thought I'd tell you guys that. And of course, that would include internship and things like that, because they need to try to get out. They have hopes and dreams, too. Thank you.
Thank you. I understand we have one additional public comment.
Dr. Faith.
Thank you. Please come forward.
So I signed up to speak on Agenda Twenty-One, Twenty-Four, and general public comment, none of which I was called for until now. So we sent a letter, a request for the transparency of the hundred and fifty million dollar HUD funding that was sent back as Kelly Kalapi and Paul Duncan. One thing that I find refreshing, Dr. Joni Ricks-Ardy, you ask a direct question concerning why blacks are sixty-two percent homeless and back out on the street. Mr. Rex Richardson, you should know this as well, is because of racial discrimination. You asking the two people that caused a lot of the systematic racism that we speak of, you causing you to represent the homeless population. They are the ones, Kelly Kalapi and Tom Modica, we got Tyler Banana Curly. We sent a letter stating we need a letter of support to return this HUD funding into a public C O C account. A hundred and fifty million dollars is not chump change. So every time we keep throwing nickel and dime here, and you still got a whole homeless encampment sitting there not moving, you're not addressing this funding. So we're asking for the board today, as we did on November fifteenth, that we are requesting from L.A. County, which includes Long Beach, to have a letter of support drafted concerning the HUD funding returned in a public C O C account. So homeless organizations and service providers like us that have been doing it for a decade, where you have people like Lassa, who you still doing business with, because you have their logo as part of the partners, Kelly Kalapi, even though you know they do not address or aid or help black service providers. So I'm representing black service providers. And I know I get tired of people saying, well, why you keep talking like that? Well, as an intelligent black service provider, we keep getting treated like roaches. It's unfair. I'm tired of looking at the smug faces that almost got smug from public comment coming down here. Why we gotta fight and struggle for everything? This is unfair. So what I'm asking right now is Tyler Banana Curly, his last response is that, oh, according of, as further review from our office, which is the legislative board, Tom Modica, right? Oh, well, we cannot give you a letter of support for the request that you ask. That's it. Dismissive, no response. So I ask, Mr. Banana Curly, what's the reason for that? Crickets, nothing. That's how we get treated. I get tired of looking at everyone that gets their family, their race, their neighborhoods looking nice, and black people get treated like garbage, no matter if we're intelligent or we're criminals. We're tired. We're tired of you dismissing, not answering, no response is just as disrespectful. How long do you think we're gonna sit here and tolerate this while we're giving you the ideas? Who do you think gave the Long Beach Hospital idea, Ms. Zendaya? Who do you think brought that here? We're the one that brought that here on November fifteenth, when we declared a state of emergency that you took credit for in the Long Beach paper. Stop the cap.
Thank you. Your time is up.
My time is not up. I promise you. My time is up. It's gonna be Paul Duncan. So don't ask him about black anything. We've got black service providers that can speak for ourselves. Don't ask about black data when we can speak for ourselves. We're tired of being your data, but you're not giving us the funding, equity, or respect, even house the homeless in Long Beach. What the hell's wrong with you?
Thank you, Dr. Faith.
My name is Dr. Truth Bag.
Thank you. All right, that satisfies the agenda. We'll now go to announcements and adjournment. Before we, before we do so, we just want to adjourn tonight and acknowledge some tragedies have taken place in our state, in our adjacent cities, in Monterey Park and Half Moon Bay, you know, two significant mass shootings that took place. And every time that these things happen, we, you know, we condemn them and we talk about what needs to change. And it's always sobering when those things happen, but again, we reaffirm our commitment to this, and we need to make sure that we're doing all we can. In Long Beach, we reflect our support for gun control and, you know, and additional standards in our federal and state agendas, but it seems like there's something more that we need to do. We also want to acknowledge the tragedy that took place on the West Side, you know, with the young man from Lakewood High School, Khalil Salim. I spoke with his father and his family. It's indeed certainly a tragedy, and we at the city of Long Beach extend our condolences. And I want to, I want to also ask Councilwoman Sorrow to provide some comments as well.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, first, I want to just wish those celebrating a happy Lunar New Year, and as Mayor Richardson shared, you know, there are people who were celebrating, they thought safely, and unfortunately, a person with hate in their heart, in his heart, came in and took their lives. Eleven people died, you know, where they should have celebrated safely and with families who are grieving at this moment. And I just want to make sure we send our condolences to their family and as well that we stand in Monterey Park, as well as those seven who also with a person with hate in his heart have taken their lives. And, you know, that, we also send our condolences to them. And, you know, and I am in agreement with Mayor Richardson. We need policy change as much as it is important we express our thoughts and our condolences to the family. We do need to do more, and I want to, I hope we will do more. Thank you.
And with that, we're now adjourned. Thanks, thanks so much. Have a great week.